Presiding Officer of the Council, the Lady Tejeda. Is this on? Presiding Officer of the Council, the Lady Tejeda wishes to advise the audience that the nurse of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted in the bulletin board, in the city clerk's office, and in the city's website indicating that today's meeting is being held in the YMCA Theater Room in the Public Safety Complex, 365 New Brunswick Avenue at 5:30 PM. The council meeting will follow the caucus and the closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices to you need to make a telephone call. Please go out in the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Rock Hall, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Present.
Councilwoman Torres?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. I don't think my mic is...
Maybe because the hand mic is there?
Is it off?
Maybe that's what's causing...
There's nothing on.
Oh, okay.
Now it's on. It's not off.
I don't know what he's saying.
Hello? Is it on? Is it on? Okay, we're having... Oh, Rock Hall.
I did.
Oh, you did. Presentation. Today, we're having the health benefits of water fluoridation by the New Jersey State Department of Health, and they're here to have a presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Clifford Lissman. I'm a pediatric dentist. I joined the Department of Health on April 8th of 2008.
Speak a little louder.
And prior to that, I was happily unemployed.
They gotta come and fix that.
Council members, you have my bio.
I'm not gonna start this. Aren't they in there or don't they hear that?
Okay. All right. You have my bio, and I'm here also with Becky Parneen, state dental hygienist, and you have her bio also. I joined the Department of Health after being happily unemployed for seven and a half years, having sold my dental practices that I had throughout the state because I wanted to make a difference. Part of making a difference is getting our state to have fluoride in the water system. And I'm gonna go through some items and discussion. You have our slides in your packet and other documents there. First thing I wanted to talk about briefly is decay. Decay is a transmissible disease, which means you can give it to your family members, you can give it to infants. It is 100% preventable. One of the significant ways of preventing decay is water fluoride. Decay will progress. It starts off as a small cavity, gets bigger, could infect the nerve or the pulp of the tooth, cause pain. Many times, if it's not treated, it develops an abscess, which would require root canal treatment and crowns or extractions. Worse yet, sometimes the infection drains into what we call facial tissue spaces, could be around the neck, and that has a possibility of infecting the windpipe, or it could be around the cheek area, and that has a possibility of infection traveling to the brain. I've seen that happen. There's also been a well-known death of DeMonte Driver in Maryland from that. So decay is nothing to sneeze about from that point of view. Also, the treatment. Sometimes it has to be done in the operating room, particularly for children or disabled individuals, and there are significant risks there, and there have been deaths from that as well. The Department of Health has undergone what's called basic screenings, and New Jersey has fared exceptionally poorly in those basic screenings for Head Start children and for third graders, and you have documentation of that within your packet there. With the third graders, New Jersey had approximately 36% of the children in third grade that had untreated dental decay. 15% of them required urgent care. When you look at the national average, we're way high of the average, national average of 20%. In great part, that has to do with fluoridation. If we go to... I'm gonna skip that part there. New Jersey ranks second to last in the nation for fluoridation. The only entity that is worse than us is Hawaii. We have about 16% of our population covered. Nationally, it's about 75% across the board. There are some people that have some concerns about fluoride, particularly for fluorosis. When you get... Fluorosis gives some staining on the teeth. That does not occur after the teeth are erupted. It's only while the teeth are erupted, and over time, that lessens. A lot of people mistake other things for fluorosis. Medications can cause pitting and staining of the teeth as well, and so can infection while the teeth are developing. Oops. Don't worry about that. What happens when a community such as Perth Amboy ceases to fluoridate, where they've had fluoridation? In Canada, in Windsor, that happened, and they had a 51% increase in urgent dental needs as a result. Okay? There are other studies as well. And in... Let's see which one here. This is for Alaska. They also had significant increase when they discontinued. Both those communities, after they realized what was going on, reinstituted water fluoride. We have, in New Jersey, when we did our surveillance of schoolchildren, third graders, 59% of them had Carrie's occurrence, meaning they had fillings and/or active decay in their mouth. That is very close to our neighbor in Pennsylvania, where they also had 15%. They were able to compare communities that had fluoride versus non-communities that had fluoride, and with fluoride, they decreased... Those communities had 16% less chance of the children developing decay. Now, I've lost some of my notes here. Yeah, that's not it. Okay. How does it work? It works in two methods. One is, as the teeth are developing, the fluoride becomes incorporated into the tooth structure and makes it more resistant to acid, which are produced by the bacteria. The other is topical. It coats the outside of the tooth and incorporates fluoride into the tooth as well. So it's important that we use both... And the topical comes from toothpaste, comes from when you go to the dentist applying fluoride, fluoride varnish. It comes from drinking the water even after the tooth has developed. Okay, where did I go to my last pages? It's safe. Fluoride in the water has been around for 70-plus years. It has been highly studied, thousands of different studies concerning the safety of fluoride. There are no, absolutely none, medical concerns as it relates to fluoride. Any studies that have come out have been flawed to indicate the opposite. And here's some dollars and cents, okay? Approximately... This was what year, the $32?
About five years ago.
About five years ago, there was an estimate from the American Fluoridation Society that people who have fluoride save $32 per person per year. The population here in Perth Amboy in 2022 was 5,355,357. You multiply that times 32, that's $1,771,424 savings per year when you fluoridate. Money's one thing. The other thing is, why should we suffer? Why should children suffer? Why should adults suffer? You know, when you have cavities, it affects school. A child that's in pain isn't gonna do well in school while they're having pain. It affects their appearance. They're gonna have social problems, potentially be bullied as a result of having decay that you can visually see. And for adults, it's gonna affect your socialization as well, and it's gonna affect your ability to get a job. And, you know, it just doesn't make sense. You have in there some documents from the World Health Organization outlining the costs that are not directly related to care of fluoride. So... And I said $32? That was five years ago. With inflation, you're probably talking $40 now. I mean, there... I just can't imagine why any city, any town, would not accept water to be fluoridated. Okay? I have a picture in your booklet, the second to last page. It shows, you know... Which would you rather have? A mouthful of cavities that are unsightly, or would you rather have a good smile? And as a practicing pediatric dentist, I spent my career treating patients unnecessarily because of lack of fluoridation. Can I just say one thing?
Finish.
Okay. When I was in dental school, okay, at Fairleigh Dickinson, we had to take our boards to get licensed, and we could... Virtually any patient there had decay between the teeth, which was a requirement. When I did my specialty training in Chicago at Children's Memorial Hospital, we were so hard-pressed to find decay between the teeth, it was almost impossible. That's the difference.
I have two questions for you before I tell you my concerns. How many municipalities in New Jersey put fluoride in their water?
I don't know the statistics.
Thank you for the question. It's very hard to know. We are actually collecting data, but approximately only 15% of New Jersey have water fluoridation.
Okay. And, well, I guess you will know how many in the county, in the Middlesex?
We are actually... We're collecting data as we speak, so we don't know because they're not required to report how much fluoride they have in the water, so we are calling them individually to find out how much fluoride they have in the water.
It's not how much fluoride, if they add fluoride. I mean, I'm not asking how much they put in. What municipality adds?
We can get back to you as soon as the data is collected, we can get back to you.
Now, I wanna get to my concerns.
I can tell you that it's centered much more around central Jersey. Mercer County has, you know, a fair amount of their municipalities have fluoride, less so north and very south.
Okay. I have here two research that have been done, and both research allude to... I'm just gonna say, researchers from Harvard School of Public Health and China Medical University in Shenyang found strong indication that fluoride may adversely affect cognitive development in children. High fluoride content in water may negatively affect their development. Okay? This is another, and this is another one about pregnancy and neurobehavioral issues in young children. The investigator found that women in higher fluoride exposure during pregnancy tended to rate their children higher for overall neurobehavioral problems. And also, it states here, conducted in Canada and Mexico on the effect of fluoride on children's IQ, the findings suggest fluoride may negatively affect fetal brain development. To me, I think nowadays, we put so much chemical in our body, adding one more that is just gonna affect our children. It could be that the benefit... And to me, yes, topically, we can add fluoride for... We, most of us, do with the toothpaste, and I think it works. And most of the researchers that I read, they... Topically, it's the best way of helping prevent cavities. And... But I feel very strongly about it, but that's only my opinion. Is anybody else?
Can I respond to your comments? Okay. Number one, there hasn't been a scientifically-done study that meets the criteria of a well-done study that indicates there's any problems with fluoride. One of the studies that you just cited, I have the... This area here refutes it, and we have to be very... And I'll pass this... You can pass this out. We have to be very, very careful with studies, that they have to, one, have enough people in them to be statistically valid, and we have to be able to understand the difference between association and cause and effect. Let me give you a clear example. In the 1950s, it was thought that ice cream caused polio. Why? Because people would get polio in the summertime. It wasn't ice cream, okay? There was an association, you know, okay, people eat ice cream in the summer. It was swimming pools, and they put chlorine in the swimming pools, and that stopped the spread, the significant spread of polio. That was the cause, not the association of ice cream.
Was that done through research?
Excuse me?
Was that done through research?
I believe it was. I'm well aware of those, yes, but I don't have documents of that.
When you're done, I just...
Yeah. But I gave you that big, thick booklet. Read it, okay?
I'll read it.
So statistical significance in terms of having the numbers, and the best studies are longitudinal studies that go on for years, and fluoride has been studied now for 70-plus years.
If I just add one more thing, I know you're time-sensitive. So all those studies that you cited, they said high amount of fluoride. High amount of everything good is bad. High amount of vitamin A is bad. High amount of vitamin D is bad. So... But the amount of fluoride that they used to put in water was 1 part per million. Now they reduced it to .7 per million. That means three drops of fluoride in 50 gallons of water. So... And I have statistic that I would be happy to share with you. That is the safe amount for children from 1-year-old and up. So even if you put... If you drink well water, we agree, it may not be good for you. It may cause fluorosis because it's not controlled. But if you put through water fluoridation, if you have engineers and you have our Department of Health that backing you up, you have very clear amount of fluoride in the water that is even safe for 1-year-old. So those studies that you're referring to, they said high amount of fluoride. There are high amount of everything good, including salt, that is bad for the body. So, thank you.
I'm sorry.
We also put chemicals... We put chemicals in milk, vitamin D. We put vitamin C in orange juice. Now, so there are many things that are added to it, and yes, I understand the concern that, you know, we're putting a chemical into water, but this chemical is prevalent naturally. It's in our foods, some foods, particularly teas, you know, on a natural basis.
Certainly high.
Yes. It's in the, you know, the soil. We're exposed to fluoride. The idea is to have the optimal level of fluoride, not having too much and not having too little, but optimal, and that's been thoroughly studied.
All right. Anybody else?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, but we have a full room. We have a full agenda. There's very important agenda items, so I'm gonna be kinda quick with my questions, okay? Because this is taking up a lot of the time, and this evening, we have a lot of people here for other items. Have you been to any other municipalities in this county recently asking for them to add fluoride into their water?
You happen to be the first.
Okay, so that's great. Okay, so we're the first one. So Metuchen does not... You have not asked a more affluent community such as Metuchen yet to add water. Okay. Fluoridation of water should not be a supplement of dental care, okay? And I believe this community has good dental hygiene, and not only that, we now have access to dental care. Mostly, every child in this community, with the expansion of Medicaid, has access to Medicaid, to a dentist now. So this is not... This should not supplement proper dental hygiene because, as you quoted many of the studies, mostly all the studies show that only children of a specific age benefit from fluoride, and that fluoride should not be ingested, and fluoride should only be used for a certain amount of time. And any ingestion of fluoride of over 70 years could be very detrimental, not just to the person. So anyone living, born and raised in Perth Amboy, who wants to live here for their whole lifetime, the water could poison them if we ingest it for over 70 years. There's a lot of questions that have not been answered, and that the studies that are quoted, there hasn't been very conclusive studies yet, and some of the studies that are coming out are showing some of the adverse effects of fluoridation of water. So it'll be great to see some of the other more affluent communities add this substance to this water, as opposed to this environmental justice community that's already cash-strapped and already has water problems. It'll be nice to see some of the more affluent communities add this substance to their water supply for their children and their residents to ingest, and then, once the data is compiled, we will revisit that. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like... I would like to invite the people that are standing to come to the front and sit down.
Okay.
Go around.
Can I respond to him?
Very shortly.
Okay.
Please.
As you mentioned Medicaid, I was, at one point, the largest Medicaid provider in the state of New Jersey. I have seen and I have treated firsthand the ravages of dental decay from particularly not having fluoride. It is devastating. You are condemning children and adults, particularly seniors in nursing homes, to all sorts of adverse consequences, including death. And I'll tell you something else. I had two deaths in my office. There's a person by the name of James Reason, and I lecture across the country now on patient safety. They were not patients that I treated. They were patients treated by another pediatric dentist, and when you have an adverse event or danger, it goes through a whole series of Swiss cheese blocks, and if all the holes line up so that the danger can cause the adverse event, that's when you have your adverse event. It happened in the Challenger explosion.
Wow.
You... If you prevent decay from starting, you can prevent significant adverse events from occurring, and they do happen.
That is...
Thank you very much.
Well, that is some horror show you just painted for us. This is... The scare tactic is unbelievable what you just gave us of saying how this is going to destroy your community. I'm glad that members of the New Jersey Health Department is here in our community because we have been one of the hardest-hit communities, especially when it came to COVID. We had some of the most deaths in this community, and it's glad to see that you're here today fighting for this poor community to add fluoride back to its water. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have two quick questions.
Yes.
So you're saying that with the studies that were found, there's no specific concerns that you have for the growing fetus?
None.
Or for children at all?
None.
Okay. My last question is, why Perth Amboy? Why was Perth Amboy the first municipality?
I'm sorry?
Why Perth Amboy? Why is this the first county that you decided to do the presentation?
Because we... The Department of Health is looking to get a grant from CDC, actually from HERSA, to increase fluoride throughout the state. You're a low-hanging fruit from that regard in that you already had it and you have the equipment, and the cost for you to implement is minimal, and the grant was supposed to be announced August 1st. It's been delayed to August 31st. We would pay for it, so there wouldn't be a cost to you.
Thank you. We'll continue. Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, amending and supplementing the City of Perth Amboy Development Regulations and Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 40430, respectively, with respect to body art establishment.
Council President, if I may? The planning board, this was carried from last meeting. The planning board was supposed to review it at their August meeting. They weren't able to get a caucus, so the August meeting was canceled, so I'll ask that when it's time to vote on this, when it comes up in the voting session, that the council vote to carry it until the first meeting in September, and we expect the planning board will have a... And the council will be able to vote first meeting in September.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know the date of the first meeting in September?
Number two. Ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, approving application for a long-term tax exemption authorizing the execution of our financial agreement with Perth A Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at Portion of Black 131, Lat 1 dot 03, Black 135, Lat 1 dot 01, 2, 2 dot 04, and 3 through 28, Black 137, Lat 1, 1 dot 01, 2, and 2 dot 01, Black 138, Lat 1, Black 139, Lat 8 through 11, 14, 19, and 21 through 23, Black 140, Lat 1 dot 01, 1 dot 03, 1 dot 01... 8 through 11, 14, 19, and 21 through 23, block 140, lat 1 dot 01, 1 dot 03, 1 dot 04, 2 dot 01, 2 dot 02, 2 dot 03, 2 dot 04, 2 dot 05, 2 dot 06, 3, 3 dot 01, and 4, and block 236, lat 1, 1 dot 01, 2, and 12, 304 Front Street, 390 Front Street, property located Front and Commerce Street, 38 Commerce Street, 393 dash 395, Rector Street, 47 Broad Street, 402 dash 406 High Street, 56 Fayette Street, 385 Rector Street, 362 High Street, 366 dash 376 High Street, and 34 Broad Street on the, on the tax maps of the City of Perth Amboy. I will advise the council and the public that I will be moving, I will be moving to table this ordinance at the regular meeting. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey amending an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted.
Sorry, Council President. I have some questions on that.
Okay.
Move so quick.
This is the caucus meeting.
This is a caucus. They move so quick as if they got to.
Okay.
I have some questions about this. This is an important one. I had some questions.
It is going to be table due to, and I mean, probably Mr. Olber can speak better than on that.
We can't hear you.
Okay. We're having technical difficulties with this microphone. And you just, you don't have to shout. Please.
My first question is, what is the total acreage of this project? And added that, how much acreage does Kushners already own? And how much acreage is Perth Amboy giving or selling to this project? Then I, so I, what is the assessed value of the property being given by Perth Amboy to the Kushners for this project in today's value? Is that value calculated in today's value?
Yeah, I mean, we all live here.
And.
We, please.
If this deal goes through, is the developer able to sell this project to another developer? And if so, are they able to sell the pilot along with the project? I see that the developers put in up 70 million of their own money. That's a lot. And borrowing, close to 130 million. Who are they borrowing that money from? These are the questions that I really, really need some answers to.
First off, just let me be clear. The Council President mentioned that this is going to be tabled at the voting session. So I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that. The, the property isn't calculated. We don't have a calculation in acres. I can get you the assessed value of the parcels to be sold. I can give you that to you in probably 10 minutes. And, you know, with regard to the, well, hypothetical transfer of any pilot, it can be transferred to a wholly owned entity for financing purposes. But until the project's complete, they're, they're not permitted to, to transfer. So that's usually, that's the language that was in the proposed financial agreement. So.
The project complete, meaning the construction of the project, but after that, it could be, can it be sold to another developer along with the project for the extension of 20, 30, you know, say if they complete the project and they hold on to it for 10 years because they sell it to someone else along with the project, with the pilot?
Yeah. So they wouldn't be able to, they wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a permitted transfer until the redevelopment agency issued this certificate of completion for the project. And if it's transferred at that point, if it's transferred, or the, the new, the transferee would step in the shoes of the current developer, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change the terms of the, of the pilot.
I was looking at some comparable types of developments. And I heard from, is, was this developer in any way involved in the project, Port Liberty in Jersey City?
I have no idea.
Is anyone here from there?
We have a lot of projects.
Because, because if they were, and I believe they might have been, this was something that was kind of promised to Perth Amboy. So beautiful development on the waterfront that was built, a land that needed to be rehab, just like ours. And in Port Liberty, I was looking at some of the properties. What was created there was four mid-rise buildings consisted of 48 condominiums, along with 25 beautiful townhouses. The project was completed 20 years ago. It took 30, so some of these properties are between 25, 20 years old as of today. One of the townhouses with three bedrooms and three baths, 2,500 square feet, is being, has an asking price of $1,599,000. Another one adjacent to it that has four bedrooms and three baths is selling for $1,485,000. The condos attached to that are being, a three-bedroom condo with three baths, $899,000. This is what was basically promised to us over 20 years ago when this project first started. This is something that the community was asking for, some mixed use, along with some, we asked for private ownership. We asked for one families. And this was a nice mixture of condos and one families. I've been to this location. They also have a ferry that goes to Manhattan, just like we are being able to have also, since we're waterfront communities. I don't understand why that, that one's able to flourish, but not ours. I, I see that they had economic downturn when they were developing, just like we did. They also used the housing market to change our original plan from condos to now rentals. But in that time, the real estate market has changed. Right now, not just in New Jersey, but across the country, there's not enough houses for working families. And by building more rentals, they make their individual properties a lot more valuable. And yet keeping us, the working class, not allowing us to have the American dream of a ownership of a home within our own community. The rents that are being asked for this project is outside of Perth Amboy's residents' ability. It's outside of the, it's outside of their economic. And it's sad. It seems that this is the begin of, beginning of a gentrification program. I have other questions too, when it comes to the $1 million that is supposed to go to affordable housing. There's really no detail. So it's $1 million for affordable housing within 30 years to go to, and not to create new housing, which we desperately need. But it's going to rehab existing housing? We don't have, how many houses are going to be rehabbed? Who benefits from this, this project? I had this, this is extremely frustrating. It's been a hard month. Going over all the documents and knowing that this is going to come back up.
You need to stop and let the meeting continue, or I'm going to have to be forced to take you out.
One of my main concerns is also, but this could probably be answered right now. Does the city council, do we have the final vote on the project, on the design plan for this project?
No.
The city council does not have the final vote on the design plan? Has, has this plan been finalized? Has the redevelopment agency received the final plan?
The redevelopment agency has a concept plan. The final, by statute, the final plan would be approved by the planning board.
So you're asking, you were asking the council to approve something that has not been finalized?
Well, the, the concept and the units have been finalized, all of that. It's just the architectural and design, which usually, the more technical items by statute go to the planning board for approval. But the project itself, the financials, that's all in here. And the, the concepts, what they're allowed to do within the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan was approved by the council, but the, the final scope of the project is included in the redevelopment agreement. That's under the purview of the redevelopment agency.
Yes. And the council, the past council had voted to dissolve the redevelopment agency and to take on the responsibility of PARUP on its own. And we had voted to do so. And so it seems that in the past, there's been problems already with this developer and with residents. And there's been law cases that happened with this development. And it seems that, that there is really nothing in place here to make sure that this project is going to be completed on time. I see there is nothing really here for penalization that if the property is not completed on time, just like the other project was never completed. And Perth Amboy has lost out on millions of dollars throughout the years that could have gone back into our coffers, back into our school system, into our budget to enhance the life of the residents of Perth Amboy, instead of enriching the pockets of very wealthy developers who have a history of stiffening the working class and have a history of giving subpar housing to renters and for evicting renters for just a minor, minor infraction. So this is who we want to go to bed with. This is something that we really need to take serious. This is not benefiting Perth Amboy. We already have a shortfall in our school budget. They're projecting only 18 students out of hundreds of units that are coming into our, into our community. This is sad. I have nothing else to say. I have a lot, but I can go on.
Also, I would like, I would like to add to what Mr. Councilman BJ Torres mentioned, is our responsibility of how we use the money that comes in. So if our responsibility to help the school, that comes from our side. So it's not really from the project itself. We, we will be the determining body of that, how we use the money that comes in from the pilot. But anyway, let's continue.
I think that's why it's crucial to not just rush into this plan, to have more negotiations. A lot of concerns that I have shared with, with my colleague as well, the accountability of those developers, the input. We have to make such a big decision. And we had, we didn't even have input in the preliminary stages of it. Just moving forward, I think, I mentioned that prior, input is definitely needed. And while it's tabled, I hope a lot is considered. The units are massive. And what's considered is, is pretty massive. And we really have to outweigh the benefits of what really, what we're trying to bring to our current residents and if it's worth it or not.
Thank you. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey amending an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons, ordinance number 380 dash 85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255A, seek of the code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about deletions. Number four, an ordinance to establish the honorary naming of the police boat Marina, Marine Number Two as Police Officer Thomas Regi.
Council President.
Regi. Sorry.
Go ahead. I have a question to Mr. Green.
Get this.
Am I on? Can you hear me?
It seems like this is.
Has the families, have the families been notified that tonight we were going to do this?
I can't answer that question. I'll get your answer. I'll text the chief.
You know, I, I would, Council President, maybe we should table these three. Because if they're not here, this is an event for them.
Yes.
You know, I mean, these three police officers, you know, served the city. You know, two of them lost their lives in the performance of their duties. And somebody should have reached out to them. We've been talking about this since June.
You wouldn't want to table it then, or whatever, hold over?
Hold over, hold over to the next meeting.
Hold over.
Should we hold to the next meeting?
And we have these on, so you would do, you would vote to just do that at the voting session.
Okay. All right. Got it.
Okay. Number five, an ordinance to establish the honorary naming of the police boat Marine Number Three as Lieutenant David Formesa. Number six, an ordinance to establish the honorary naming of Ogden Place as Police Officer Arcadio Rivera. Number seven, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey to amend an ordinance entitled Vehicles and Traffic, ordinance number 194 dash 78, as amended, adopted September 19, 1978, also known as Chapter 414, seek of the code of the City of Perth Amboy, residential driveways. Number eight, an ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Front Street located between Commerce Street and Washington Street.
Since this goes back to kind of like the larger project, since we're talking about these properties, I just want to say, first off, and this is amazing, the sovereign solidarity amongst union workers here today. I see different unions here together in solidarity for something that is very important to our community. And I'm glad to see not just the craft workers, but service workers here also. This is amazing. Once a year, I go to the Shot Factory, sale in Union, New Jersey. It's one of my favorite American companies besides Martin Guitar Fact, besides Martin Guitars. That factory, that company, Shot Leathers, has had a long history at Perth Amboy. And still today hires many residents from Perth Amboy. A lot of union workers, they've given the working poor, the upper hand to enter the middle class. And here, a part of that larger Kushner deal, there is a property that is a factory, the Matta Paro factory, that has over 100 union members as a part of the SEIU that is in jeopardy of losing their jobs if this deal goes through. We talk about going back to the time of manufacturing and union work. And here we are, a blue collar town, and one of the last strongholds of the service industry here that actually provides a living wage is being threatened for a develop, for a multi-billionaire developer. I'm not sure how we're going to supplement those jobs here in this community as temp agencies pop up, you know. As temp agencies pop up, you know, all I see is nail and hair salons closing down and people were complaining, that's all we had. But now they're being taken over by temp agencies, which just provides, you know, barely above slave wages. This is something that we really need to reflect on, on what is this community? Are we a blue collar union town? Or are we aspiring just to kick everyone out and to bring in a whole new class of people? What is gonna be the future for Perth Amboy? And who does it benefit? And on whose back are these people making all their money from?
Council President, I just wanted to clarify one thing the councilman said. The Metaparrel site is not part of the site. It's adjacent to it, but it's not within the area.
Not the site, but it's a part of the full development. Is it a part of the full project?
No.
No?
No. It's a separate site.
Number nine-
Has any, then, has any discussions have been, has that property been looked into for redevelopment?
It's been looked into. It's not even in a redevelopment area. I know the planning board was considering a study as to whether it met the criteria, but they haven't gone through with the hearing yet. So it's, but it's not part of this project. It's not a designated redevelopment area right now.
But it's being considered, it's being considered for redevelopment, correct?
It's, whether or not it meets the statutory criteria for redevelopment is being studied right now.
Well, part of that study should include that there is over 100 union members.
Yeah.
And that should be a very important part of that study.
Number nine, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to Chapter 386 of the City, of the City Code, to include the new regulation for sidewalks sales. Number 10, an ordinance authorizing amendment to Chapter 217 of the City Code, filming to include new regulations. Number 11, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of the property designated as Block 23.05 Latin 1 on the tax map of the township of Woodbridge, owned by the Perth Amboy Redevelopment Agency. Agenda: Public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearings. Citizens shall be permitted to speak for a maximum of five minutes. Bits: RFPs were received on June 7th, 2024 for the following: Leasing of space for concession purposes at the Perth Amboy Marina and Train Station. Papa Pincho LLC yearly lease, 2,800, 2024. Naya Sushi on Wheels yearly lease, $2,580 for the 2024. Parking space at the train station to Papa Pincho LLC space at Marina to Naya Sushi on Wheels. Those were the recommendation of bid awards. Bits were received on July 9th, 2024 for the following: Rebid for the Jefferson Street Parking Garage 2024 repairs. Seal Creed Contracting Inc., base bid 207,790. Allowance 20,799 dollars. Total 228,569 dollars. TJ Base Isle Inc., base bid was 221,226 dollars. Allowance 22,122 dollars. And the total of 243,348 dollars. Schnell Contracting LLC base bid was 264,285 dollars with 86 cents. Allowance 26,428 dollars with 59 cents. And the total was 290,714 dollars with 45 cents. Mary Waterproof proven Inc., base bid 290,000 dollars. Allowance 29,000 dollars. Total 319,000 dollars. And the recommended bid was Seal Creed Contracting Inc. Reports: Jill A. Goldie, CFO, Controller submitted the following: Check Register Report for the month of June 2024 in the total amount of 9,706,267 dollars with 50 cents. Investment Report for the month of June 2024: Revenue and Appropriations Status Report as of June 2024: Current Fund, Water, Wastewater Utility, Parking Utility, Harborside Marina Utility. Fallen Borcheski Tax Collector submitted the monthly report of collections for the month of June 2024. Ordinance First Reading: No public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled Anordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons, Ordinance Number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255A, seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about deletions. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled Stormwater Management, adopted April 28, 2021, Ordinance Number 1970-2021, as amended, also known as Chapter 384, seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy authorizing a five-year billboard lease agreement with outdoor partnership for the purpose of erecting and maintaining double-faced outdoor advertising signs. Number four, an ordinance amending Chapter 158 of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to address further the use of an operation of bicycles within City of Perth Amboy, including low-speed electric bicycles and scooters and motorized bicycles. Resolution: R313-824, authorizing the insertion of revenue in the calendar year 2024 budget pursuant to NJSA 48, Column 4-87, Chapter 159, PL 1948, for the UEZ five-year planned grant in the amount of 125,000 dollars.
Council President, I have a question. Has there been any change in the directors and the UEZ BID recently? So we still have the same director and the BID?
Yes.
You mean the Special Improvement District, the Special Improvement District at the stand today? There isn't new, well, one hasn't been appointed, because remember-
But that's different than the UEZ.
Oh, UEZ. What are you referring to, the UEZ or a special?
Since they all work hand in hand?
No, they're two different entities.
Two completely different things.
Good point, ma'am, I'm sorry.
But at the same time, since I opened it up, is, do we still, is, we have someone new or is there a-
No, not since he resigned.
Not since he resigned.
From the Special Improvement District.
For the Special Improvement District, right? And when was that? Because usually we receive communications where someone like that resigns.
It came to the city council. I remember when it came, that it was presented. There has been interview for it.
Interview, okay.
R314-824, authorizing the insertion of revenue in the calendar year 2024 budget pursuant to NJSA 48, Column 4-87, Chapter 159, PL 1948, for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of 90,909 dollars with 9 cents. R315-824, authorizing the extension of the grace period to August 20, 2024, for the August 1st, 2024 tax quarter. R316-824, authorizing refund of tax exempt fully disabled veteran tax overpayment of CoreLogic on Block 360, Latin 19764 Francis Street, in the prorated amount of 1,971 dollars with 43 cents. R317-824, accepting the proposal of authorizing a one-year rental agreement with two one-year options to Leonel Tejera DBA Papa Pincho for the leasing of space for concession purposes of the Perth Amboy Train Station. R318-824, accepting the proposal of an, of an authorizing a one-year rental agreement with two one-year options for Naya Sushi on Wheels for the leasing of space for the concession purposes at the Perth Amboy Marina. R319-824, amending. R223-524, accepting the proposal of an awarding lease to Canyon Eagle III LLC with two one-year options for dock space for a commercial boat at the Perth Amboy Harborside Marina in the amount not to exceed 13,300 dollars. R320-824, authorizing change order number two to the contract of S. Brother Inc. for the 2023 Road Improvement Program Phase Two in the amount not to exceed 78,367 dollars with 68 cents. R321-824, authorizing a contract with T&amp;M Associates to provide design services for municipal parking lot rehabilitation and roadway improvement project in the amount not to exceed 98,100 dollars. R322-824, referring to the planning board and amendment to the Focus 2020 Redevelopment Plan Area One Gateway pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Council President, I have a question. Can someone explain what that, what the amendment is, what the change is, what we're being asked and to vote on?
Yeah, the proposed amendment, so the gateway redevelopment plan, there's a proposed fast food project that's going up there, that's proposed for up there. It's not obviously finalized yet because the redevelopment agency hasn't considered the agreement for it. But these proposed amendments would allow that type of use in the area. The fast food with a drive-through is basically it.
Okay. R323-824, awarding a bid to The American Plumber for construction services related to the home improvement program in the amount not to exceed 21,250 dollars. R324-824, authorizing the City of Perth Amboy the use of second-generation urban enterprise zone funds in the amount not to exceed 75,000 dollars to fund code and fire department roadway and parking lot repairs project. R325-824, rescinding in its entirety. R65-224, authorizing the City to submit an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for Urban Enterprise Assistance Fund for the Business Ambassador Project in the amount of 60,000 dollars for the fiscal year 2024. R326-824, authorizing the City of Perth Amboy to submit an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for the Urban Enterprise Zone Assistant Funds for the Business Ambassador Project in the amount not to exceed 100,000 dollars for the fiscal year 2024. R327-824, rescinding in its entirety. R477-923, authorizing the second, the use of second-generation urban enterprise zone funds in the amount not to exceed 35,000 dollars to fund the construction of the Five Corners Project in the urban enterprise zone.
Council President, why is this being rescinded? The project's no longer going forward?
The money was no longer needed, so it can be used for other projects.
But the project is going forward?
The project's still going forward.
R328-824, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA in the amount of 90,909 dollars with 9 cents for the 2023 Assistance Grant, AFG, for funding for emergency medical technician EMT training. R329-824, accepting the bid and authorizing a contract with Seal Creed Contracting LLC for the Jefferson Street Parking Garage 2024 repairs, Phase Three rebid in the amount not to exceed 228,569 dollars. R330-824, authorizing a contract with ADS for the purchase of a BACS 2.0 SmartGuard Asset Management System in accordance with Sourcewell Contract Number 090122-ADS in the amount not to exceed 115,148 dollars with 25 cents. R331-824, authorizing a contract with Winner Ford for the purchase of eight 2025 Ford police interceptors, AWD, with options under New Jersey State Contract Number 20 Fleet 01189, in the total amount of 357,576 dollars. R332-824, authorizing up to 60 days of paid injury leave for Angel Soto through October 24, 2024. R333-824, authorizing up to 60 days of paid injury leave for Jeremy Mendez through September 24, 2024. R334-824, amending. R304724, accepting the bid and authorizing a contract with Seal Coast Construction Inc. for construction services for basketball court improvement Phase Two project at Patent Center Park and Columbus Circuit Park in the amount not to exceed 790,017 dollars with 72 cents. R335-824, authorizing a refund of the amount of 100 dollars to Maria Vargas for the cost of the permit fee for the use of Duffy Park. R336-824, authorizing refund of the registration fee for the 2024 boys' baseball ages nine through 10 in the amount of 50 dollars to Escandra Javier. R337-824, authorizing the closure of High Street from Gordon Street to Smith Street for Perth Amboy Day of, on September 14, 2024. R338-824, authorizing the 2024-2025 renewal of certain plenary retail consumption licenses effective August 15, 2024. R339-824, amending. R166-424, approving a special permit for public entertainment to the United Dominicans of Perth Amboy for the Dominican Festival to be held on August 9, 10, 11, 2024 at the Robert Willens Athletic Field on First Street and Sadowski Parkway, amending the time and dates.
Council President, I have a couple of questions about this one. First, I'm glad that they didn't have it on that horrible weekend. It was a lot of rain, but it could have been very dangerous, there was high winds and a lot of lightning. But my concern is this. Is the promoters hiring, are they hiring Perth Amboy Police? And if so, how many for this event?
Okay, I don't know how many, but they are. I don't know if the chief is here or anybody from the group.
Yes, they are in fact hiring off duty police officers Perth Amboys they have for every year since they've had the festival.
Off duty officers?
That is correct.
How many?
At right now, I can't get into deployments manpower. At this point, I can speak to you directly about that, but it's not something for the public that I put out there. We have, we meet with the organizers of the festival, we also work with their security force, which they have about thirty to forty security guards there through the the entertainment there, and we work with them on a on a regular basis. But we do have deployment, I can tell you it has increased over last year, but we do have a deployment out there.
The additional cost for being a holiday, the additional cost for having this program on a holiday weekend, who is going to occur the additional cost? The city or the promoters of this event? Because I'm pretty sure even though they're off duty, this is a holiday weekend as opposed to the other when it was originally scheduled. So do these off duty officers receive more pay because it's a holiday weekend? And if so, who covers that difference?
They do not. It's set by city ordinance, whether it's any holiday, whatever it is, it's a set rate for off duty work, so it does not matter that it's on a holiday, there is no increase cost on that side of things at all.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. R three forty eight twenty four authorizing the refund of tax overpayment created by tax appeal on block three fifty four lot one nine twenty High Street in the amount of one hundred and fifty three thousand five hundred and fifty four with ninety eight cents to Mark McCarter and English LLP. We also have other resolutions to to add to the. Okay, so this is the retail that's done. We have two more. So this will be R three forty one eight twenty four. Resolution authorized the insertion of revenue in the calendar year twenty twenty four budget pursuant to NJSA forty eight column four dash eighty seven, chapter one fifty nine PL nineteen forty eight for the S F Y twenty four Papa Party Prevention and Response Initiative Grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Then we have resolution R three forty two eight twenty four. Resolution of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey authorizing the acceptance of an award from the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for the twenty twenty four. Isn't that the same one? That's the same one.
Insertion.
Oh, that's the insertion.
One is the chapter.
One is the insertion and one is, okay. Okay. Resolution of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey authorizing the acceptance of a word from the Department of Law and Public Safety of the twenty twenty four Papa Party Prevention and Response Initiative. So it should say insertion in this one.
The prior.
The prior.
Authorizes the insertion.
Okay, so this one should be first then.
Yeah, but I got it after the.
Okay, no, okay. And then this is three forty three. Resolution of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey authorizing the mayor to execute a federal aid agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation, NJDOT, for the safe routes to school Rose Lopez Elementary School pedestrian improvement.
And Council President, I have a question about this one, maybe someone could answer. Maybe I might be mistaken, but I thought within the last couple of years, a large sum amount has gone to that school for pedestrian safety. Am I mistaken, or within the last two years, money has gone to the Rose Lopez School for the public safety?
Madam President?
Yes.
So this particular grant is for the award to, the state is giving the engineering firm the money to design the project. The award that we received for six hundred twenty five thousand dollars has not been executed yet. We received the money, the state gave us, or is giving the engineer additional monies to do the design for the work for the grant that we received, so that we don't have to use the grant, our grant money to to pay for engineering services, and all of the money would be used for the construction project.
Okay, so that's six hundred million, you said?
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand plus this amount right here, one hundred and sixty nine thousand two hundred and ninety two.
Yes.
My concern is, is this, and I understand that all the students, we need to have safe walkways, but my main concern is with the new high school being built and what money it have, seems that we've been working for years for pedestrian safe walkways for this school that really doesn't need it as much as the new high school that is across from Route thirty five. And when is that, and I would love to be there for the opening, when is the opening of the new high school?
So I can't speak to the Board of Education and their process, but I could speak to the fact that Safe Routes to Schools Grant only funds pedestrian safety improvements for elementary schools and not for high schools. That funding comes from the state and from the federal government. We applied for the elementary schools and thankfully we were awarded. In addition, for the high school safety components, I will give kudos to our state legislators and our local legislators for ensuring that we get an additional two million dollars for, close to three actually, for safety improvements for the high school. In regards to the opening of the school, I cannot speak to that event because I do not work for the Board of Education.
Well, since we have had you up here, you have background, you were on the Board of Education when the school was approved, you're currently serve as a Director of Office of Economic Development, you're also Director of of our PARA, of our redevelopment agency, and so you have your hand on which grants that we're going to apply for and where there should be allocated. The school will open this year. When will a pedestrian walkway be built so that way our students are safe crossing Route thirty five, because there's already been several fatalities within the last couple of years? When will it be built?
Madam President and Councilmember Torres, the funding that we received for pedestrian improvement or enhancements over on Convery Boulevard is part of this year's state budget. It just passed, and we're now waiting for an agreement to use those dollars. So there's nothing that can be done prior to, we have to wait for the budget to pass and for the agreement for this particular funding so that we can move forward.
So that is the only funding that we could use is specifically, definitely, hold on a second before you answer, we couldn't use any other money? And I'm gonna know this might be frustrating, but these questions may be the residents want to know some of these answers. My question is this, could we use any funded from somewhere else for that? Or could we even gone to our own pockets to make sure that our children are safe and use funds from our own budget to make sure that this pedestrian roadway was created so our children were safe, since we knew that the school was being built and that it would open this September?
Any funding opportunities that are presented to us come to you all through the recommendations of the city administration. So as to date, there has been no other additional funds that we have gone after or have been applied to.
Have you recommended any of these funds for that pedestrian?
We've been working with the school district and the Department of Transportation for all funding opportunities.
I'm pretty sure if this council.
Thank you, Ms. Council President, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
But I'm pretty sure if a resolution came before this council asking for funds to build a pedestrian walkway, this council would have approved it because we care about the safety of our children.
Okay, so okay, three forty, R three forty four. Resolution of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex State of New Jersey authorizing the use of a second generation urban enterprise zone funds in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars to fund the street paving improvement in the urban enterprise zone.
Council President, if I can, this was my fault, there was one recital that was missing from the version that's in front of the council, and the recital just, it's an additional line of the of the history of this of this funding, and it was just Resolution sixty one two twenty four, which was adopted by the council in February earlier this year, authorized the change order decreasing some of the costs in the amount of sixty thousand five ninety nine and thirty five cents, and that'll be in the final version of the resolution, should have been in this version. So that's just, the numbers add up more easily when that's in there to show that there was a decrease back in February.
Okay, thank you. That's it for that. Communications. Closed session resolution, R three twelve eight twenty four, authorizing a closed session at the August fourteen twenty twenty four meeting to discuss personal matters. I need a motion.
Move.
Second. All.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President Tejera?
Yes. Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, reference this Kushner property.
I need your name and your address.
Three five nine Brook Avenue, B R U C K Avenue, thank you. All right, and a party management company partially owned by Derek Kushner, son of a law, a former president Donald Trump, has agreed to pay three point two five million dollars. And that's amazing, because it was rodents, it was disgusting property and everything else like that. But in Perth Amboy, we love him, from leaks, mold, rodent infestation, and widespread and numerous other problems. But because of McCabe and our Assembly President Coghlan, who wants this project to go through, that's what we're having here. The Democratic law firm for the Middlesex County is the one that's motioning this. So going back to the grieving administration, that's why Kushner's here. When is this going to stop? He builds shoddy garbage apartments, he makes settlements after that, and the residents got to suffer, and we're going to give him a tax break. What kind of decision is that that we're going to give this billionaire? Don't remember President Biden say billionaires pay your fair share, pay your fair share? Well, this billionaire is not paying his fair share, and our Democratic law firm over here is negotiating it. The council gets it at the last minute and has to approve everything here. Now, why are we going to give him a thirty year or thirty five year pilot so he can build garbage again? Is there anywhere along that we're going to change this? And now we're going to vacate a property on Commerce Street, and I believe that's for him, and isn't that property right by where that warehouse is or that company? So we're going to give him free property, free land, he didn't pay the four million dollars to, when did we get the check for four million? Ha, nobody wants to answer that because did we get the check for four million? So for twenty years, he's owned us four million dollars. That property and real estate has got better. This council proved to fix the property by taking the oil tanks out and everything else and making the property better for him. So how much are we going to bend over and kiss him because McCabe, now Coghlan, Assembly President, because you now consider yourself Democrats? So the highest ranking Democrat, Assembly Speaker Coghlan, is responsible for this. So how is he going to explain this when he runs for election that he gave a tax break with no money for kids, for the students? Not a penny for the children. You guys gave away millions of dollars for the schools, they laid off fifty seven union workers, union workers, they laid off. And you guys negotiate, the Democratic law firm negotiates no money for students, for children, and we laid off union workers. It's a shame because these people, some of these people who are here were on the Board of Education. So everything used to be always for children, I guess childrens don't matter anymore. They don't matter anymore. To the Assembly Speaker, millions of dollars given away. Our Assembly Speaker, the President of the Assembly, is accepting this? Does he know that? I just talked to another councilman in Woodbridge who says they don't negotiate pilots like that, they give money to the schools. So I believe that law firm, the Democratic law firm, is the one that negotiates it. So why in Perth Amboy do we give money away for students that laid off fifty seven employees? But in Woodbridge, they do it differently. And I believe it's the same law firm that works for the redevelopment agency over there. So why is Perth Amboy so different? Why are we so different that we give it away to rich people over here? Can anybody tell me the difference between us and Woodbridge? No. Yous have a great day and a better tomorrow.
Thank you.
Council President?
Good evening. Maria Garcia, one twenty four Kearney Avenue. The high school.
Wait, Maria.
Yes.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, the high school, they're going to have a ribbon cutting on August twenty eighth. So I know that, I don't know how anybody else did know. So you knew about it then, why didn't you say it? Here we go. We have, we had a contract with Kushner to build the Marina with with slips for boats, retail shopping, restaurants, a hotel, six thousand square state, square feet, state of the art health club. Now we are getting a dog park in some open space. We're giving him a tax break for thirty five years, and we are getting, okay, a total of one thousand two hundred and four. We're giving him a tax break for 35 years, and we are getting, okay, a total of 1,204 people, just adults, to per apartment. Out of that, each one will have two cars, right? More or less. And they are offering us 692 parking spots. But they're not taking into consideration that out of that 500, um, 692 parking spots, they have to offer one-third for EVs. So it's going to be much less of parking spaces for those that have fuel cars. That's going to be a shortage of 600-plus parking spaces. Where are all these people going to park? Then we have, let's suppose that they have only two children per apartment, plus the two, you know, the parents. That's going to bring an increase of the population of 2,408, more people into the city. Right now, our schools are overcrowded. We do not have enough money to pay for more schools. We don't have the land to build schools. Where are we going to build these schools that we're going to be needing in the future? We will have to knock down houses and call it eminent domain because of this project. What is it that we're gaining here? Has anybody thought about this? Are we gaining anything? No. We are losing, and we are losing big. The union shop, he just said that it is on the redevelopment proposal. Why? Why is this union shop in the redevelopment when it's not a blight area and they are not proposing something that is for public use? So why are they even looking at it? What is the reason that they are looking at this shop? There has to be a reason. Are we willing to kill jobs for some, I don't know, something that we don't even know? You are going to vote for this, yet we haven't seen the plans. Where are the plans? So you're going to vote for something that you have no idea what it is, is not going to benefit the community, is going to create more burden to our, to our, uh, population, to our streets, to our schools, okay? We're going to need more firemen, we're going to need more policemen, it's going to be a burden for the taxpayers of this city. But here we have, like he said, the Democratic Party is the one that is behind this at the county level. They've been wanting this for years, and they've, you can laugh all you want, but it's the truth. We know that is the truth. And we don't know how come they're so nice to Kushner. After all, they hate Trump. Thank you.
Council President? I'd like to say something, because I think Ms. Garcia brought up some of the amenities that are being promised now to Perthamboy. In the past, the past project, we would promise a lot of amenities also, and some of those amenities are restaurants, banks, um, in the landings. In the meantime, we have empty storefronts that are boarded up. My question is, who is responsible for the renting of those storefronts? Why haven't they been rented? Now, this goes to a larger question of depreciation of value. How much money has the Kushners received by depreciating this value, writing it off on taxes for the last 20 years, instead of doing the right thing by developing and giving to Perthamboy, was rightly due Perthamboy? And who was responsible for the renting of that property? Because the property's been boarded up for years. I would, I wish there was a restaurant there. I would walk over, I would spend my money at that restaurant. But here we have all of these residents for over a decade with these boarded-up properties on, in the bottom level of their apartment, of their so-called luxury apartment. Who was responsible for renting out those units, and why haven't they been rented out? We have, we have people here from Para. There's people here from Para. Why isn't anyone answering my questions? We, we have the Director of Para here, we have the Chair of Para. Why isn't my questions that pertain to Para, why are they not being answered? This is a meeting. This is a working meeting. Can somebody answer that question who's a representative of Para?
Let's give the public the time that they need and deserve because they're here. Uh, I think, uh, Councilman Torres, I, I, I know you have plenty of time that you spoke on the, on this topic. I would like the public...
Why are you defending?
No, 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 no.
I had one question.
I'm not defending, I'm just allowing the public to have their time to speak.
I asked about 20 questions in the beginning of the meeting, and not one of them was, almost none of them were answered. Most of those questions pertain to this development. I went through a whole list of questions, and they weren't answered. Now, this question, I'm looking at two Para members, and all I wanted to know is who's responsible for renting that property and why was, why hasn't it been rented out? And, and to me, that's a simple question. But if you want to wait till the end of the meeting for that question to be answered and allow the public or the employees to dictate how this council controls and conducts its decisions?
I'm not allowing anyone to dictate, but I think the public has been here waiting for their turn to speak. I, I should allow them to speak. Thank you. Go ahead. Get close to the mic. State your name and your address, please.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Nancy Maldonado, soy residente de Perthamboy, vivo en el 132 de la First Street.
And my name is John Russell, I'll be translating for her.
Okay.
Al igual que mis compañeros, estoy aquí para manifestar mi preocupación por la decisión que se va a tomar con respecto al terreno que está ubicada la compañía Meda Parel, la cual...
Give him, give him time to, darle tiempo a que él traduzca.
So I'm here to discuss of, of the, of the idea of what was going on right now in 35 Washington Street.
La compañía la cual nos proporciona trabajo a todos mis compañeros los aquí presentes...
The company that right now gives job for myself and everybody and all my partners that are here with me.
Y dicha decisión que tomen nos impactará gravemente a nosotros y a nuestros hogares.
And the decision you guys made today will affect me and my, and my, and my fellow colleagues' families as well.
Por favor, tomen en cuenta que aquí laboramos varias madres solteras...
Please take in consideration that a lot of, um, single mothers work in this factory.
Las cuales dependemos de este trabajo para sacar adelante a nuestros hogares...
Which we depend on this job so we could get, give a living to our families.
Y si la compañía llegara a cerrarse o mudarse...
And the company would close or have to move...
¿Qué vamos a hacer nosotros ya que varios no tenemos algún medio de transporte?
What will happen to us, as a lot, a lot of us do not have a form of transportation away from where we live at...
¿Cómo le vamos a hacer para conseguir un nuevo empleo? Co...
How will we have, how can we go and find another job?
¿Cómo vamos a sacar adelante a nuestros hijos?
And how can we make sure that our kids keep progressing in life?
Esta decisión que ustedes tomen, tómenos en cuenta, por favor.
The decision you guys made today, please take us into consideration.
Ya que afectará gravemente a nuestros hogares.
Because it will greatly impact our families.
Tomen en cuenta que también somos residentes de Perthamboy.
And please take a consideration that we are residents of Perthamboy.
Espero que en esta decisión que ustedes tomen, nos tomen en consideración nuestros comentarios y preocupaciones.
And please, we really hope that your, your action today take a consideration of us, our well-being, and what we, what we stand for.
Gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council President, for the next speaker.
I just, I, I want to be very clear. I know I said it earlier, the Meda Parel site is not part of this project, just so everyone is aware of that. That site is, it's the second time it's come up tonight, and it's the second time I've said it, and I'll say it every time it comes up, it's not part of this project.
Él solo quiere explicar para aquellos que hablan en español, that, que esta factoría, este, esta, uh, locación, es, no está incluida en ese, en ese proyecto. Okay, not yet, uh, you're saying that, but, pero todo lo que se está, la, lo que está propuesto para esta noche es, no está incluido esa corporación. Thank you. Next.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Tereboza, vivo en el 266 de Mark Street, Perthamboy. A continuación de mi compañera, nada más de escuchar el plan de la ciudad es muy aterrador y preocupante.
Um, to listen to the plans of the, of the city right now, it gives me a lot of fear and, and makes me really worried.
Mis compañeros y yo tenemos dos preguntas.
Um, my colleagues and I have two questions.
¿No se supone que ustedes están parabelar por los intereses incluyendo nuestro empleo?
Um, the first one is, um, isn't this board, um, what your responsibility is to make sure that the, that the residents of the city of Perthamboy and their livelihoods are taken care of?
La segunda pregunta, a ustedes no les importa que todos nosotros los trabajadores nos quedemos sin empleo?
And my second concern is if you guys are worried about all me and my colleagues not having a, a, a job right now...
Queremos escuchar realmente esta noche las respuestas a nuestras dos preguntas.
Tonight, we hope to listen to the answers to both of my questions.
¿Por qué es la preocupación de todos mis compañeros aquí presentes?
Because it's what, what me and my colleagues are currently worried about.
Porque no podemos creer que la ciudad pueda crear y pueda hacernos que nos perjudiquen a todos nosotros.
Because we can't believe that the city is gonna make these plans to affect us and all my colleagues.
Y sobre todo que afecte a nuestras familias.
And most importantly, it will affect our families.
Esperemos esta noche que tomen conciencia y que valoren nuestro pedido.
We hope that tonight you guys, um, really take us into consideration and understand that we're really worried and we want, we want everything to be, be, be okay for us.
En nombre de todos mis compañeros, de la Unión y de los dueños de la compañía...
Um, in behalf of myself and my colleagues of the Union, that we currently work for the, for the, for the factory.
Para cual trabajamos esperamos una óptima respuesta. Gracias.
And we hope an optimistic response for us and what we're going through right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Opal, you're telling me and the council and the people here, there are no plans in the future that incorporate that lot?
I'm saying that this project does not incorporate that lot. As I said earlier, there are studies being conducted as to whether that lot meets the criteria as an area in need of redevelopment. That's pending, I believe, before the planning board right now. They're conducting a hearing, they're, I believe it's an ongoing hearing, so they're studying it, but it's not a designated redevelopment area right now.
All right, you're on the record saying that, and so I just want to make sure that we're not gonna come back here a couple months from now, and this place is gonna be filled up again, and they're gonna call us a bunch of liars. And I don't want to see that happen.
I'm on the record saying that it's being studied as an area in need of redevelopment. That's all I'm saying.
What I would like to say is this, because of how things are so cryptic in these agendas, that in the future, if this comes back, if that parcel of land, if that block comes back from the planning board to the council asking for our permission to hand it over to redevelopment, that I request that it not just be listed as the block number, that it'll be listed as the streets in the business that is within that address. This way, the council will know what they're actually voting on than some just cryptic thing on the agenda saying we're asking for this block number to be handed over. So in the future, with this one in particular, because we see how much the residents care about it, that that item should be listed, not just by, by the block, but by the business, the whole street names, the whole area. This way, the, the residents and the council knows exactly what we're voting on.
Sure.
Thank you.
Whatever the council wants.
Next.
Hola, buenas noches, mi nombre es Pianet Muñoz, y también soy trabajadora de Meda Parel.
Tu res, uh, tu, donde vives?
552 de Saire Avenue. Bueno, sé que soy repetitiva, ya mis compañeros han dicho mucho de lo que nosotros tenemos la preocupación.
I know I'm being repetitive because a lot, a lot of my colleagues said the same thing I'm about to say right now.
Pero quiero que sepan que ese trabajo nos mantiene a toda la familia, muchas de nosotros somos madres de familia solas.
I just want to let you know, guys, know that this, this job, my job, it does give me a livelihood and make sure that, you know, me and my family, you know, we're, we're taken care of, and I'm a single mom, so it really does help me a lot.
Ese trabajo nos da un seguro con el cual contamos de salud, tenemos un plato de comida en la mesa para nuestros hijos.
And the job, it actually gives us insurance, which for us is very important. We make sure that, you know, we're, we stay healthy and we get, we're able to give food to, on the table to our kids.
Todas las noches dormimos tranquilos porque sabemos que al fin de semana vamos a tener un sueldo.
And we could, we go to sleep, um, comfortable every night, knowing that Meda Power will always be there for us to go there and give our labor to.
Tenemos la facilidad de poder ir a nuestras casas temprano y poder ver y velar por nuestros hijos.
And we have the, um, facility to ensure that, you know, if there's ever an emergency, we could go step out, go take care, we have to take care of in whatever school here in Perthamboy, and then come back to work, because everything is so close.
Por eso les pido que al que tomen la decisión a la hora de pensar en retirar nuestra compañía, piensen en los 120 trabajadores que dependemos de eso.
And I, I just hope that you guys please consider, um, us and 120-plus employees that work for Meda Power whenever this may happen now or in the future, um, and make sure that, you know, we're safe and we're good.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Before we continue, before we continue, I've seen, where is the line? Who is in the line to speak?
I'm sorry.
Because I've been seeing people crossing the line and leaving the rest that are on the line. I, I, I just want to organize it that everybody, it's fair to everyone.
I'm so sorry, so he's the last guy to talk.
Okay.
They were all just one group.
Okay. Go ahead.
Buena noche, mi nombre es Vicente Sosa, soy residente de Perthamboy, vivo en el 277 de Reto. Trabajo en la compañía de Meda Parel y soy miembro de la Unión de Unitel.
Yeah, I work for Meda Power and I'm currently part of the Union as well.
Yo como mi compañero de trabajo también estoy preocupado con todo esto de que la ciudad quiere cerrar nuestro puesto de trabajo.
Me, like my colleagues, I'm also worried about, you know, the plans of them closing down Meda Power and closing down the job that I currently work for.
Aquí en este trabajo tenemos buenos beneficios, también estamos con un seguro médico. Bueno, hay compañeros de trabajo que tienen condiciones médicas.
In my current position, um, we have, uh, uh, great benefits, we have medical insurance, and there's a lot of my colleagues that have, um, health conditions, and they depend on that.
Y dependen de este seguro. De este seguro. Y si cierran la compañía, ¿cuál sería el plan de ustedes para estos compañeros?
And if unfortunately you guys do decide to shut down the company, what would be the plan for us and what's gonna happen to us? What's gonna, what's good the plan for us in the future?
Esta compañía tiene 120 empleados y todos son residentes de aquí de la ciudad de Perthamboy.
We currently have 120-plus employees in Meda Power, and all of them are residents of Perthamboy.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tyrone Shields, 280 Palisade Avenue, Cliffs Park.
You can brace it a little bit for your height. Okay.
I'm loud anyway. I am here to address the...
I am here to address the agenda item two regarding the approval of a 30-year tax exemption for Kushner Companies on the Seagate Project. I am a member of Laborers Local 77. My union represents 25,000 men and women in New Jersey. I know what responsible development looks like because as a laborer and a union member, I have worked on projects where employers have committed to provide family sustaining wages and benefits. Kushner Companies does not maintain this standard. Kushner has used irresponsible subcontractor Concrete Rising on three recent projects in New Jersey. Concrete Rising and its subcontractors have a history of safety problems, serious, serious safety problems and wage and hour violations. In April 2023, the New Jersey Department of Labor issued a stop work order against Concrete Rising in Jersey City for unpaid wages, working without being paid. Concrete Rising settled the complaint agreeing to more than half a million dollars in back wages, fees and penalties for violations against 181 workers. They are now debarred from public work. Additionally, Thomas Bertoli, a principal of Concrete Rising, was convicted of tax crimes and is currently serving a three-year probation. Perthamboy and the, and the people of this community deserve better than a bad employer like Concrete Rising. I am proud to be a construction worker and represent my union brothers and sisters, but construction work is hard. You earn your wage with sweat and blood. It is outrageous to give taxpayer money to anyone who allows workers' wages to be stolen. This council should not finance exploitation. I do not believe that Kushner Companies should be awarded this pilot agreement unless they commit to local, local hire goals and wage standards for workers. I thank you for your time tonight and urge you not to approve the proposed pilot agreement with Kushner Companies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I just got a statement.
State your name and your address for the clerk, please.
I will, I'm just, you know, between question and statement, two different things. Ray Corca, 2416 Sunnyville Oval. First off, in the paper that the administration doesn't support, there's no council meeting dates from January to December. People were misinformed of last meeting, there's no council meeting dates on the website, in the council section and nothing in last January's agenda. Bringing up this topic of problem during the Fourth of July holiday, don't sound right and these real estate talks are greedy. There's too many projects going on and it sounds like the city is not being responsible, not getting it done right and not having an open mind and saying yes to too many things, that's wrong. I'm guessing the historical committee is not important, there's a disconnect on them and the dynamic is off and all of yous, and I want to defend the HPC. I don't think they've been treated equally, I think Mr. Massipus would support this, shame on the council and power. Not including the HPC on historical topic related items of last June's meeting and even times before. Sixty million dollars given out and not given to the Salvation Army, not helping the homeless and not giving money to the HPC and not bringing back the ambulance service. Old police station has always been a landmark and not just recognized enough, it goes back to the mid 1800s and must be saved and fixed off a new purpose for the city. Name the community policing center, a DARE program, junior police academy, CPR course, criminal justice course, mechanic workshop and even the PAL program and a Rossler and Hasler display of industrial legacy. They should have never moved apartments across town where the YMCA is, this is where the firehouse is supposed to go, but it's not here. The first aid squad is terracotta behind the red brick and it should be engraving on the top center facade and as artifacts and memorabilia inside. Should put two or three family homes that match the other side of the street to look like Lower High Street. You know, knock down first aid squad and save the terracotta blocks for water stadium entrance possibly, keep the firehouse, reopen it as a second firehouse. The fire department sounds like all they want is everything new, well, how come the city couldn't get two ladder trucks instead of one? Come 2028, it'll be 10 years without a ladder truck replacement since 2018, that's unacceptable and they're supposed to have three ladder, three newer ladder trucks, but they don't. I'm missing a trolley is more important and there's also not enough police. There was an empty lot on Lower 141 High Street, now there's two twin family homes and as a right to street side, I guess you can put apartments with parking on the bottom. Mayor Cobb and his people say to continue to try new ideas and invest and relive our local history and embrace it, doesn't seem to care about the history. Taking down wall hangings throughout City Hall, we all know the historical sites in town, but been there, done that. How about adding the old police station site to the list and should be for the 250th anniversary in a couple years? The building must be preserved in actual recognition, shame on Mayor Golda, saying she's a history lover and shame on DPW not keeping the property clean by trimming. The trees are cutting them down and cleaning the ivy off the building. Coming from me, Mr. Dyke and HPC hasn't put enough effort in, lack of support from the administration. A structure is more important than the alley roadway, all they do is talk about putting historical markers instead of saving the actual building and getting rid of history. The HPC and you, the council and the mayor and the B O E don't work together. You all have blinders on, there's a lot of problems and it's stupid that Mayor Cobb and his people say to continue stuff in the newsletter and the state of the city, the website, and not really mean it, the county to, continue to be a place where people come and try new ideas. Cobb and his team's choice of words don't sound good, there's too many pipe dreams of open space, there is no space and wasting grit money. The industrial company before the police department came about was also in New York City and should be a state and national landmark to move forward with a silver engineer. The roof has some damage, but that can be fixed. The construction company that's doing the train station, they could renovate the old, the old police station or get other estimates. Other historical buildings have been lost over the years sadly due to politics. The retired and current police officers will say that was a real headquarters and others will say what it was before, it just truly shows that the city doesn't have no empathy and doesn't have an open mind. This is the last site and it should be saved in current times, if the city is gonna put out more apartments, then you're putting more stress on city services. Maybe Kushner's apartment should be knocked down and have that area relooked. Possibly a performing arts center, parking lots, new walkway from the ferry slip to the new county park. There's too many projects going on between Victory Bridge, both sides of Victory Bridge and there's not, not even a pedestrian, it is done come September for the new high school. Kushner's property sidewalks, corners are round instead of square and I think his sidewalks shouldn't be the way they are. There's, there's concrete going into the streets, taking up the size of the street, making the street smaller.
Thank you.
I just tabbed the pages that are related to what I'm speaking about. Stephanie Brusita, 274 Davidson Avenue. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stephanie Brusita. I'm a preservationist and lifelong resident of Perthamboy. I'm suggesting an alternative solution to the demolition of the old police station and first aid squad buildings. They should be rehabilitated and adaptively reused. Just so everyone is oriented correctly, these are the buildings in question. And here is a 1930, 1930's photo of the old police station, next. The old police station was constructed in 1911 for Rossler and Hasler Lester, excuse me, Chemical Company, a major employer in the city at the time, using a Perthamboy-based construction company. When it was rehabilitated, the old police station included the addition of half a third story, a police garage and a police pistol range. Not long after, in 1940, in the 1940s, the first aid squad building was built. There is precedence for rehabilitation and reuse of these buildings as the old police station was reused by the city with modifications to suit the needs of the police department. But rehabilitation and reuse are also, also initiatives the residents of Perthamboy pursued. Otherwise, we wouldn't have any historic resources left in our city. This shows pride in our city and pride in its history, next. So as a suitable approach to the fate of the old police station is to reuse it as a community center and the first aid squad building can be reused by the fire department for first aid squad services. Another potential use for the police station could be a performing arts center. The rehabilitation and reuse of the building also can help create job opportunities for residents both short and long term, next. It is commonly said that the greenest building is one that's already built. According to the U S E P A, renovating historic buildings plays an important part in revitalizing a communities, community maintaining its unique local character, creating a sense of place and provides a more sustainable alternative to site redevelopment. It's an important approach in reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the building sectors. For example, a new green, energy-efficient office building that includes as much as 40% recycled materials will still take approximately 65 years to recover the energy lost in demolishing a comparable existing building in addition to the carbon emissions. Now let's look at the amount of debris created from the demolition of these buildings, next. The formula in blue is used to calculate debris from demolition for a total of almost 8,500 cubic yards of debris, of which almost 10,000 tons of brick will end up in the landfill. Various sources state that brick lasts up to 500 years, some saying even more. This is a minimum of how long that will stay in the landfill, but it's also a testament to how long these build, brick buildings can serve our community if they are rehabilitated. Other materials found in these buildings will also last a long time in the landfill, next. Now let's look at how these buildings can help foster heritage tourism in our city. In 2019, tourism in New Jersey saw roughly 116 million visitors and 46 billion in spending, next. Heritage tourism is traveling to experience the places and activities that authentically represent the stories and people of the past. It includes historic, cultural and natural resources. From the previous total, heritage tourism brought in 9.9 million visitors and 3.6 billion in spending. By far, Cape May County brought in most visitors spending from around the state. Can you think of a reason why, next? It's Cape May City, a national historic landmark. Visitors love seeing historic buildings and historic towns. It's not just the beaches because the Jersey Shore is roughly 130 miles long, plenty of beaches to choose from. Having historic resources facilitate this visitorship and visitor spending contributes to their local economy. Why do you think New Orleans is so popular? It's not just the booze and parties. Perthamboy can take advantage of heritage tourism. The old police station and FSA buildings can become catalysts to ignite heritage tourism in our city. According to the 2010 Heritage Tourism Master Plan for New Jersey, visitors look for readiness and direction when it comes to heritage tourism, which can usually be obtained through a welcome center. Something as, something as simple as a small room within the community center where they can get brochures for historic sites, eateries, leisure, leisurely activities and have access to restrooms can help facilitate smooth navigation throughout our city. The old police station can facilitate these uses, next. By rehabilitating the old police station and first aid squad buildings, you're investing in the future of Perthamboy. Our historic sites can become a backdrop for movies, drawing the film industry to our city. With the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, the proprietary house in the city will be in the spotlight. There are, there may even be some trickle down of international visitors who will be visiting for FIFA 2026 as New Jersey is hosting the final match along with other matches. Putting in the efforts to rehabilitate this city now, now make the city ready for these major events. And let's not forget our city's own 350th anniversary for 20, in 2033. Now is the time to invest, and I'm gonna just stop here because I have another half of it for the other five-minute portion. Please stay for the other half.
Hi, Sage Nieves, 270 King Street. The recent decision to grant the Kushner Company a 35-year exemption from paying municipal taxes is a glaring example of political favoritism that comes at a significant cost to the residents of our city. This deal is not only perpetuates an uneven playing field, but also places an undue financial burden to our community, effectively requiring residents to shoulder the costs that should be covered by corporate tax contributions. Our city is already grappling with overpopulation and the addition of more condominiums, townhouses and apartments exacerbates the problem. The infrastructure is strained and the introduction of more multifamily housing will inevitably lead to further overcrowding in our schools. More money has been allocated to Perthamboy schools from the state than ever before, yet pink slips are being handed out to numerous staff and security personnel. The current council members must be held accountable for the lack of independent judgment. It is unacceptable for them to merely follow directives without considering the long-term repercussions to our city. This decision reflects a failure of leadership and a disregard for the well-being of our residents. Moreover, the mayor and the administration have failed our city. The promises made during this year's past campaign, such as no municipal tax increase in 2024 and all while keeping taxes stable have proven to be empty words. The granting of a lengthy tax exemption to a large corporation contradicts these assurances and undermines public trust. Additionally, it is deeply concerning that these ordinance were brought to light behind closed doors. Such secrecy in governance is a betrayal of public trust and a violation of the transparency that our democracy demands. The council members and the mayor have not adhered to the oath they took to serve the city and its people. They are supposed to be the voice of the people, not the voice of a ventriloquist parroting the interests of powerful entities over those of their constituents. It's truly perplexing that such a significant piece of our city's heritage, the old police headquarters, is being handed over to the Kushner Company without a second thought. This building isn't just a structure, it's a relic of our past with stories and architectural elements that speak to the very fabric of our community's history. The decision to give it away like a prize on a silver platter is not only outlandish, but also demises the building's potential for adaptive reuse. Imagine the possibilities if we approached this with a focus on historic preservation. This old police headquarters could be transformed into a vibrant community hub, a center for arts, a unique mixed-use space that blends historical charm with modern functionality. Adaptive reuse could maintain the building's historical integrity while giving it a new lease on life, serving as a testament to our commitment to preserving the past while meeting current needs. By repurposing the building thoughtfully, we honor its history and provide tangible benefits to the community rather than simply auctioning it off to the highest bidder. This approach would not only preserve the building's unique character, but also contribute to the cultural and historical richness of our city. In conclusion, this tax exemption for the Kushner Company is a disservice to our community. It prioritizes corporate interests over the needs of the residents and contributes to the financial and structural challenges we face. The mayor and council members must be held accountable for their decisions and the resulting of this impact towards our city. We call for a reevaluation of this decision and demand a more equitable and transparent approach to governance that truly serves the interests of all our residents. Furthermore, the proliferation of more warehouses is not the answer either. We need thoughtful, sustainable development that addresses the real needs of our community rather than creating additional logistical hubs that further strain our resources and infrastructure. It is time for our leaders to prioritize the long-term well-being of our city and its residents. The council prior to you and the council prior to that one and that one and that one have all shot down all of Kushner's plans. This is the worst of his plans. Understand that. If they all said no, that means something and I hope it means something to you too.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sharon Huberman, 529 Cornell Street, City of Perthamboy. I hope that you can see that there are so many individuals, residents, that are not only concerned regarding the direction of the city, but also concerned with their livelihood. What I heard today was the American dream and I appreciate that. When have we started to relive that American dream in Perthamboy? Where Americans, individuals who reside in Perthamboy can reach that American dream? Whether it's through the craftsmanship by union labor, union labor where they have designed homes, history. For example, we look at the model, this beautiful model that the historian presented with the police headquarters. Where have you seen such history all across New Jersey? We have it here, but yet there was a magnificent, someone's magnificent idea to put it under redevelopment. So play, pay, pay very close attention to the contract. In that contract, it states that the mayor of the city of Perthamboy can amend that contract. We have been sitting on the end of a bad deal, not only in the last four years, but we can go back maybe even the last 20 years. That's how long. That's how long that deal has been in play. Why haven't we done anything about it? The power is there. Read the contract. You don't need to approve it. It is actually mind-boggling that the redevelopment agency has even given it consideration, especially when we have tax increases. How do we see it? When you go grocery shopping, has it been going down? No. How else do we see it? Our water rates? How else do we see it? We have seen an increase in the amount of expenses that our working families have to pay on a monthly basis. So I urge you, please pay attention to the details of that contract. And if it states there that the mayor has the final authority, why isn't he here? Why isn't the mayor, the current mayor, not talking about this contract and how it can be amended, or that we're not even gonna look at Kushner anymore? We're gonna look and entertain other ideas. But unfortunately, he's not here. I can't speak for him. But what you can see is that there are residents here who care about the direction of our town. And I believe that each and every one of you also care about the direction of the town. Let's also revisit the affordable housing crisis. Yes, there is one. But you know what all this talk about climate change and the impact of sustainability? Six hundred-plus apartments. Imagine the amount of cars. Imagine the amount of carbon monoxide. I mean, it seems like a big platform about sustainability. Why don't we have homes? Homes where family can raise their children? Why are we entertaining ideas where we're going to give the biggest tax rates, not for thirty years, but for thirty-five years? Maybe in the short term, it seems like you're hitting a windfall by that one million-plus dollars for ratables, but in the long run, there have been, council has held the strings to the purse, the financials. And it is incumbent, it's a fiduciary duty, as a matter of fact, to really look at not only the interim trajectory of that decision, but also to look at the long-term implications. So I urge you to please reconsider it, look at the details, they're highlighted, and we need more accountability. And to give a redevelopment site to non-labor, non-labor, union jobs, that is, I can't believe it, because we've had already a series of residents where there has been underperforming work. So with that, my last point was regarding Perth Amboy Day. I heard, I see it on the agenda, and I hope that if it is open to organizations, that not one organization would be permitted from participating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Kosky. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Greenbaum, Rowe, Smith &amp; Davis, and our firm represents Metaparrell, the owner of 51 Washington Street and 35 Washington Street in the city. Initially, I would just, on behalf of my client, I would like to thank all the employees that showed up this evening to voice your opposition and show your support. Clearly, there's no statement I could stand up here and make that would be more impactful than the voices of the residents and the citizens of this city before this council. However, I am here to correct the record on a couple issues and comments that were made. First, there was a comment made that the Metaparrell property is not within a redevelopment plan nor designated. That's incorrect. In 2000, it was designated as an area in need of redevelopment, and since that time, it has been located within the waterfront redevelopment plan S2A zone. The issue is that the city does not have the authority to condemn the property under that designation. And that's why, in April 2023, Para requested, and this board agreed, to authorize the planning board to investigate the Metaparrell property and the surrounding properties to determine whether or not it was a condemnation area in need of redevelopment. That process started in October 2023. The initial hearing occurred, followed by three subsequent hearings over the next six months. After that third hearing, the planning board unilaterally made the determination to stop the hearing based upon a claim that the notice was defective. Metaparrell has never been advised what exactly was defective in that notice. But not deterred, the planning board spent additional city funds to have the planner revise his report in an attempt to cure the deficiencies that were raised in the original hearing. That report was circulated in May. The planning board attempted to have or to commence a new hearing this summer. However, the notice that they issued was defective. So now it's been pushed off, although a date has not been set yet. You can, I'm fairly certain, it'll either be September or October, at which point the planning board will seek to designate the Metaparrell property as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment. When that occurs, that will give the city the ability to condemn Metaparrell and with it, the hundred and ten union jobs of city residents who work in the facility. And then, one additional comment I wanted to address that was raised about the ability to transfer the agreements or the project. There was an indication that, I believe, it could only occur before the certificate of completion and to a directly controlled entity. In fact, the financial agreement provides that prior to the issuance of the certificate of completion, the entity shall be permitted to transfer any phase, its ownership interest in the land, or any ownership interest in the entity in accordance with the redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement defines a permitted transfer to include an assignment and/or transfer of redevelopment's interest in the redevelopment agreement to an entity in which a redevelopment or any of its affiliates retain a direct or indirect control. So under the plain language of the agreements, they can be transferred.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that information, for clarifying, for clarifying my question. This is an issue that I've had because not only is Mr. Opel our attorney, but Mr. Opel also sits as the attorney for the redevelopment agency. So when I have these questions, sometimes it's not clear the answers that I receive, but you certainly clarified that. Thank you very much.
Counselor President. Counselor President. If I may.
There's one thing that also needs to be clarified, and that is that while the planning board conducts these hearings, they can make a recommendation, they can conduct the hearing and they can find whether or not the properties meet the criteria. It is ultimately up to the city council to designate the properties. So there's nothing that the planning board can do other than make a recommendation that the properties meet the criteria. It would be up to the council to vote to designate the properties under the writ of exception.
Thank you.
May I address that?
Your time is up. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Jane Witkin. I live at 37 Lewis Street in Perth Amboy. My parents, revered community activists, grew up here, as did I. And my husband and I moved back a year and a half ago. Mayor Kaba, with the approval of this body, appointed me to the Historic Preservation Commission in April of 2024, and I refuse to view that appointment as merely ceremonial. It was I who proposed, at the July 25 HBC meeting, that we nominate the former police headquarters for landmark status, and my colleagues concurred. There will be a public hearing on September 26 prior to our regular meeting. Other members of the HBC, as well as community members, have and will speak eloquently about the historical significance and the tarnished reputation of the Kushner Company, by the way, the historical significance of the building. So I will simply say that its demolition as part of the proposed redevelopment of the entire block on which it sits would be a disgrace. We have contacted a well-respected preservation architecture firm, ready to do an evaluation of the building for adaptive reuse if we are allowed. In all my years as an urban planner for the city of New York, as a founding member of the Maplewood Historic Preservation Commission, and as a member of Maplewood's Master Plan Committee, I have never seen a project as tainted as the one before you today. Perth Amboy's law director, Mr. William Opel, is also counsel to Para, having replaced, if I am correct, William Northgrave. Both are partners in McManaman, Scotland, and Baumann. If you do not see a conflict of interest, then you are incredibly naive. At the July council meeting, Mr. Rosa, Para's chair, presented himself as chief apologist for the Kushner Companies. Why do you think that is? What amounts to a thirty-five-year pilot for this project is outrageous. By the way, take a look at the destruction of the cityscape at Journal Square in Jersey City caused by the building of the hideous Kushner Towers. As I witnessed the wanton destruction of Perth Amboy's cultural and industrial heritage, I think I now understand why there has not been a new master plan in twenty-one years. Sorry if I'm getting emotional, but this is very disturbing to me. Warehouses seem to be the default choice for almost the entire mouth of the Raritan River before it empties into the Raritan Bay. I have heard that the site of the decommissioned oil tanks at the city's western entry point on Smith Street will also be transformed into yet another enormous warehouse. Correct me if I am wrong. What a lost opportunity. A smart master plan with an intelligent zoning amendment could have avoided that fate, finally creating a beautiful and welcoming entrance to the city. While we're at it, why can't the roof of the police pistol range be replaced, and why can't the water department building and property be maintained? There seems to be a remarkable lack of vision and imagination among council members, all of whom, with the exception of Mr. Torres, remained silent during the July council meeting. Mr. Opel either could not or would not bother to answer a simple procedural question at that meeting. Perhaps impoverished Perth Amboy does not merit his full attention. My late father, Nathan Witkin, fought unsuccessfully to save the Innis Studio. However, he did succeed, as a member of the zoning board, in seeing that the Robert Anton Willen School was not built on a contaminated site proximate to the daily traffic of hundreds of trucks carrying heavy cargo. There is power in public protest, even at this late date. To quote Peter Finch in the movie Network, "I'm mad as hell, and I'm not gonna take it anymore." Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not even gonna attempt to top that one. Linda Cruz, 282 Water Street. You've heard all the facts this evening. You've heard from union leaders, you've heard from historical societies, you've heard from residents. I'm here just to talk about, just as a citizen, resident, born and raised here in this town, live here on Water Street. Do you go down High Street at all? Do you know how busy High Street is? And you wanna put six hundred apartments there? What, the fact, doesn't make any sense at all. You can't, you cannot do that. And eighteen, they're only gonna have eighteen youth that will be attending school out of six hundred and two apart. How did they even come to that? How did they even fathom that? Our schools are over. We are definitely booked. We don't need, we need one-family homes where the people can live nicely, not more apartments. That's all. We only have twenty-nine percent homeowners in the city of Perth Amboy. You know, when I was growing up, used to hang out at the stand down the waterfront. Kids from Cotteret would hang out there, and they'd say they're from Perth Amboy. They wouldn't even say they were from Cotteret. I don't ever wanna say I'm from Cotteret. I wanna say I'm from Perth Amboy. But you know, we could have been at Charleston. We have the history. We have the waterfront. We have everything. Cotteret, South Amboy, got the fairies. We don't have a fairy. Cotteret has a beautiful performing theater. If you haven't been there, go there. It's wonderful. We could have that by the police station. Something that would bring more elegance and perfection to this wonderful town that we have. Police, I don't wanna go to Kushner again. I mean, you've heard everything. You know what they did at the Admiralty and at the landings. They sued him. Why, why would you even wanna fathom having him again? It makes no sense, none. And you know, I was on the zoning board and planning board, and you know when you can't make a difference, you move on? And Mr. Torres, thank you for your questions, and I understand why you're not running. Good luck.
Good evening, council. First thing I wanna say is, this microphone is awful. It's all. But I would just like to make a quick comment about the history, since I've heard people talking about history. But historic tourism is the most profitable tourism.
Name a address.
I'm sorry. Lisa Nanton, 32 Gordon Street.
Thank you.
I know I forget something. You're earning your stipend tonight, all right? So, historic tourism brings in the greatest profits, and one of the main reasons is because we already possess the product. So we can't keep destroying our historic buildings because they're worth more money in the long run. So, but while we're talking about history, let's go to, back to a little bit of history about Charles Kushner with all the other good things we've heard about him tonight. Just a reminder that he was a desparred attorney, that he was sentenced to prison for filing false tax returns, retaliating against cooperating witnesses, and false statements to the Federal Election Commission. This is the guy you wanna deal with. So, I have a couple of questions, but before I get to that, I just wanna say, you know, by their fruits ye shall know them. That's Matthew, Chapter seven, verse twenty. When someone shows you who they are, you better believe them. That's Maya Angelou. A tiger doesn't change his stripes. I don't know who said that. But I do have some questions, which I will request the answers come when my time is up. First one is for Mr. Green. Since we are under a federal mandate to separate stormwater and sewers, what is the status of that? Are you writing these questions down? Because I'm not gonna read them again. Why is Kushner Project being allowed to ignore these federal mandates? That's my second question. My next question is for all of you, and I would ask you, you can answer with either a yes or no, a nod, or a shake of the head. Were any of you threatened to vote in favor of this project? Were any of you offered money to vote for this project?
No.
Shake, shake your head. Make sure you shake your head, so everybody's clear. All right. Is Mr. Northgrave still representing Kushner? That's for you, Mr. Green. And who is responsible for renting the commercial space at the landings like Mr. Torres asked in the beginning of the question? And if my memory serves me right, council questions always supersede, thank you, the public, because it's your meeting. And so if you have a question, you need to have the answer. And you know, if you all remember about George Orwell of 1984, and he was talking about all these cameras showing up, and then he was talking about doublespeak, and so now we hear doublespeak coming into our town with psychiatric institute, we're now calling behavioral health. But this is one thing that I was sad to say, that there was no time or money for the boards to go to Atlantic City, because that's where you learn all these laws, and most people on the planning board with me are there for the first time. So it's a really inconvenience. So it's a really inconvenience and it's a detriment to the city. But all I say is, go union. Go union. I know you have to understand, we are not your enemy. Whatever you decide, we're all going to suffer for it. And we will suffer. We will suffer. The city will suffer if you vote to let this go through. And whoever came up with 35-year pilot, who the hell thought of that number? That's outrageous. 35 years is outrageous. Thank you. Have a good night.
Caroline Paziki Torres, 264 Water Street. So I'm the president of Perth Amboy Artworks and the former president of the Perth Amboy Arts Council. And I am interested in the use of the police station as a community center that possibly would be, you know, a place for the arts. Perth Amboy has had so much going on in terms of arts that there's not enough space for everything to happen. And I think a space for gallery shows, for screening of films, for, you know, music performances, dance lessons, could be something that makes people want to rent units if we're going or buy, or come move to Perth Amboy with its amenities. So, you know, I don't think that the thing that you voted on to give away the police headquarters is valid because it's part of the Kushner deal. So it's still on the table here for Perth Amboy to think about since, you know, if you're not going to go with Kushner, you know, obviously we're not giving him away, our police, you know, headquarters. So it's not really given away now, since the deal was tabled, that that part of the deal shouldn't have been in a separate vote. You know, it's not legal. I talked with an attorney who advised me. So just wanted to say, I don't think it's a good idea to be breaking out pieces to developers that are separate from the larger deal to bully the council that they got to move forward, going forward with redevelopment, you know? And everybody here should be taken seriously about preservation and more community members should be incorporated into the decision-making about what's going on with redevelopment. Every single person in other towns brags about redevelopment because it's not a surprise to them. And it's no surprise, it should be no surprise to redevelopment when people want to have input. It's not like against them. It's actually, many people here have participated for many, many years in planning, in studying what is going on economic-wise across the state. And we should have input on, you know, what some of the possibilities are for the use of that property. In other places, art centers like that could be a driving economic development engine, you know? But, you know, it's something that we should consider going forward. I definitely am interested in that property to use it. So why don't you keep it for us? And, you know, or yeah, at least make somebody, if you do go with a different developer, do something with that property, you know? Like if they are going to preserve it, let it be, you know, I don't know. I advocate for preservation. I think it's really cool. It's something that Middlesex County brags about, all of its historic properties, you know? So we should, you know, do things to keep them. The piece of writing by the young woman from the Preservation Commission is moving. To me, when I read it, and she sent it to me, you know, and I thought it was the best vision of what Perth Amboy could be. And we need to support more visionaries and people participating and seeing about what their pride in Perth Amboy is about, you know, what their vision of what things could be. And then we should make those things happen. That they're, they're creating a vision for Perth Amboy and that is vital for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person.
Hello, can you hear me? My name's Ed Sofiel, live at 565 Colgate Avenue, Perth Amboy. 150 years in the volunteer fire department, me, my father, my grandfather, same company as that guy back there, that police chief and Eddie Mullen, the fire chief, Max. 150 years. We're down, we're down here at the memorial with all the war veterans. We're all down here, Sofiel's all there. I'm here to work for the building trades. And I want to tell you that we got this letter here from the Middlesex County Building Trades about this job here, and it says, "Union labor will not be utilized." Perth Amboy is the union. Right down there on Market Street, on the Ironworkers Hall, the 12 unions meet every month. And I personally work a titty keep well, and I put 15 of your kids to work at the different trades. Painters, ironworkers, electricians, plumbers. And here's the ironworker business agent there, and your sons are ironworker prentice. We need a union labor agreement here. Every job in this town, the Perth Amboy High School, the project labor agreement, look how good it is. This building, the YMCA, the school over there, everything is union. This is the headquarters of the unions. We have the best freeholders that back up the unions. We need, don't need Kushner, because you could tell him, the councilman up there, you know that he made no promises for Marina, no promises of writing. He's not guaranteed anything. He's going to deny public access to you people here in Perth Amboy. He's going to deny public access. What we do at project, in these, these 30-year pilot programs, they're good because we do them in Woodbridge and we do them in, in Saraville, in Carteret. But we get perks. Whenever we're going to build a powerhouse at Casey, one mile down the river, we're getting a free park for the people, access of Marina, a fire truck, and all for the people, not for the people who just live there. That's what's going on here. You cannot get this guy in here. And pilot projects are good because Perth Amboy is a union town. You got big salary. You got the firemen, the teachers, the nurses. You got all these people. And if you're not in union, you still get the benefits of the union. If you're a principal at a high school, you're not in union, but you're getting the benefits. And all you people are good because of the unions. We need your support. We need your support. Okay, I got a few facts here I just want to cover. Opportunities for, the opportunities are here for you guys. We got the, in Forge, we have the roofers local for apprenticeship. We got 12 business managers that meet every Tuesday, every once a month, at the Ironworkers Hall. We can get you into trade units. Our people come from you guys. Don't bring a guy like Kushner in here that's going to bring people from Pennsylvania, pay him low pay, and do crummy work. What else, David? Tell them about the guarantees. No guarantees, no public access for you people. And we need, the people who are here are right. We need a better project in here. We need a performing arts center. It's going to harm people. Perth Amboy needs people. We need jobs. We need jobs. We don't need, we don't need bullshit down there. We need jobs. Get a performing arts center. Build it the right way. Get union labor and get people hired. And people will come to Perth Amboy. We're too crowded now for housing. I mean, I could go on and on here, but if you want your kids to get jobs with the union building trade, support us. That's all I'm going to say. I got a ton here to say, but I'm telling you, don't let that guy in here. Don't let him in here. It's right here. No union labor. Don't let him in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Willie Ortiz, I live in Chickentown. I'd rather not give out my address. Anyways, so the high school is about to open up, our new high school. Beautiful, state-of-the-art, huge. There's a saying that says, right, success has many fathers, but failure is an orphan, right? And I've seen a lot of people taking credit for that high school, getting that done. They had nothing to do with it, but I have three of my colleagues here, Maria Garcia, Mr. Puccio, and me, Lady Tejada, we got that done about 10 years ago. 10 years ago, our schools were already bursting at the seams. That's why, you know, we got the state to come in and we were able to get them to come and build us a high school because we were in such desperate need. And so now, we're going to allow, what is it? Is it 600 units? Is that correct? Okay. 600 units. They're going to pay one-time tax deal? How much? A million? How much are they going to pay? What's the deal?
Yes, for 35 years.
35 years, but how much?
Yeah, they're going to pay, yeah, 64...
64 million. One shot. For one year, right? Then that's it.
That's it.
Okay. Well, in any case, it's not enough, right? We don't have enough space for schools as it is. We're just going to open up this high school now, okay? And we're going to start just putting more people in it, putting more. There's never been any connection, I think, sometimes. And I think it's weird because I don't follow the politics here like I used to, but I think the board and the city council are kind of aligned, aren't they? And so why is nobody working to make sure that we don't overcrowd our schools? If you're on the Board of Education right now, I don't know if any of them are here right now, but they should be here right now, because this is going to impact our students, our kids. You know, when we, when we signed off, you know, when we got this passed to build the high school 10 years ago, I thought my kids were, my twins were in the sixth grade, that it would get done, you know? And by the time they got to high school, maybe they, I was so naive, you know, they're going to college now. They just graduated. Okay? So I got one that's about to enter the new high school. Thankfully, he's going to have a new state-of-the-art high school. But we're going to go ahead and just fill it up. We just keep building. There's nowhere to build schools. This guy's going to get a tax, a tax deal that's not going to help pay for the schools and all these extra students. And I just don't see the sense in doing that. I think it's really going to harm our kids, you know? That's where I'm, that's the angle that I'm coming from. I still have kids in the district, you know? In order to get a school built, it's, you know, it took 10 years. 10 years. And the high school's now getting built. So I just don't know where we're going to put all these extra, all these extra kids, you know? And it's going to impact. And the other thing I want to, we don't, the Perth Amboy School District, when we left, we had about $130 million surplus in our bank account at the Perth Amboy Schools. And now they're laying off workers and I'm wondering what the heck happened to all that money? $130 million 10 years ago and it's gone.
I think you should address that with the Board of Ed.
It's okay. Yeah, I will. But this is all part of the deal. I'm speaking on behalf of the education system in this school district. Because again, we just moved out of, there's a school in Forge that we were renting out, the dual-language school, and we're bringing them back over here. But now we're going to like just keep developing and keep adding more and more and more. And there's just nowhere to put these kids, you know? So I hope you guys reconsider this. I hope you, you know, do the right thing, do what's right by us, because I think people here have a, I think they have a long memory. So I would just appreciate if you guys would just not do this deal. I think it's a terrible deal, you know? Why is this guy, we already know he's got a track record. Let's, let's just put this to bed while we have an opportunity to still do it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel President, I just want to say something pertaining to the school budget. I think that it is the council's right to hear any inquiry or any problems that residents have with the school board, because at the end of the day, the council approves their budget. Or any shortfalls within this school budget falls within the city and we would have to make up whatever shortfalls through our budget, or even now through contract negotiations. They still sometimes ask, the council would ask things that will be provided for this school, and even money for them. So yes, this is a forum to discuss those matters. We're not all separate. We all work together to better our city.
But I feel that the Board of Education will be the one giving them the exact response to where the surplus or whatever that he was questioning.
I think we should inquire where the surplus went, since we're being asked to increase our taxes to make up for some of the shortfall. So the council, and if we have any liaisons on the council, should really inquire that of what happened to the surplus money. And I would like to know that answer before the next council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rob Potek. I'm the CEO and partial owner of Unitex Metaparl Services. At first, I want to thank all my coworkers for showing up tonight in support of your job and support of the company. And just to let you know that we have been fighting this redevelopment for over 20 years and we will continue to fight it and we're not going to back down. And we're going to work together with everyone in this room to continue to push back against it to secure your jobs for the future. So thank you for coming tonight. A little, a little history of Metaparl and Unitex. We're a fourth-generation company, 102 years old. I'm part of the fourth generation. We've been union for as long as I think we've been, been in business. We first arrived in Perth Amboy in the 80s at a different location and on Washington Street in the early 90s. We currently employ about 150 union employees in the city, of which about 110 are residents of Perth Amboy. We are an industrial laundry for the healthcare industry. We service the largest health systems in the state from Hackensack Meridian, RWJ Barnabas, Virtua. We service large health systems in New York from Mount Sinai, New York Presbyterian, Northwell, Memorial Sloan Kettering. We service the resident clothing for residents of nursing homes. We process clothing for residents of nursing homes for about 20,000 residents each week out of the Perth Amboy facility. Over the last eight years, plus or minus, we've invested, reinvested over $3 million into our facility in Perth Amboy. Between equipment, redoing the roof, we've repointed the entire building for safety One of the things that has historically been brought up is, well, if your building is taken, you'll just move somewhere else in Perth Amboy. I don't know if that's feasible. We have 80,000-square-foot building. You know, this is not a thousand-square-foot retail shop that there might be a vacancy. 80,000 square feet doesn't fall out of the sky. So if this building ultimately were to be taken from us, there's a good chance that we will not stay in Perth Amboy. Not by choice. We've been here, like I said, since the 80s. We don't want to leave. But if it's taken from us, there's a chance that if another building in Perth Amboy isn't big enough for our needs, we would be forced to leave. As a lot of the employees have said, a lot of them walk to work, carpool to work, bike to work. If we were to leave the city of Perth Amboy, more than likely, they would be out of a As I said, 150 employees, all union employees, union benefits, paid vacation, health coverage, sick personal days, mandatory contribution for a 401K. I believe the Kushner Project mentioned two full-time employees post-construction. We have 150 full-time employees and we've had that since the 80s. We pay 100% of our real estate assessment. We're not looking for a pilot agreement. So you have, you have a company that's willing to pay... You have a company willing to pay 100% of the taxes and employ 150 people with union jobs, or a company that doesn't want to pay their taxes, doesn't want union jobs, and is going to have two employees. That's the choice. I know I'm biased, but it seems pretty simple to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Apologetic, 144 Kearney Avenue. Just kidding. It's supposed to be funny. Joel Rosa, Chairman of the Redevelopment Agency. But if I have to apologize, I apologize I wasn't born 10 years earlier. I probably would have been at the, at the council meeting when this was first presented in the year 2000 under Mayor Vaz's administration. It was approved with 2,000 units. And at that time, no one knew who this individual was. In fact, we knew that he did great work in other places, including Long Branch, which... And I just want to say that, you know, I'm not into name-calling. I love all my community members. I love every single one of you. I'm from this town, born and raised, worked hard to get to where I am. And I think that many of us are still in that process, hard-working, blue-collar workers. So I stand up for all of my community, whether we oppose each other or not. But the reality is, the facts are, that this project was approved way before our time. It was presented as a 2,000-unit project with various amenities, okay? This is not the first time we had these presentations. It's, this project has been presented numerous times through the Wilders administration, at the Redevelopment Agency, which is the legal entity who is authorized to oversee these projects in the redevelopment areas. I haven't seen these groups at our redevelopment meetings and everyone's invited to come. We always invite everyone to come and we host it virtually as well for convenience sake. So it's not something that we, this is not a surprise, it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. The current project, okay, we have to treat it just like any other developer. The gentleman, I shouldn't say gentleman. I'm a nice guy. So the developer presented this project and we have to treat him just like any other developer, okay? What's before you is not the sense of this project being approved. It was approved way before our time, okay? This is the second phase of this project that we're looking to complete. Now, the second-phase project is only 602 units. I wanna, not, it sounds like I'm downplaying it, compared, but compared to 2,000 units, we're talking about less than half. We're also talking about the first phase only having somewhere about 170 units, so altogether, it's less than 1,000 units on the waterfront. Now, if we wanna really transform this city of Perth Amboy, in which it is a city, it's no longer a suburb, a suburban area, I do appreciate our history, and I do everything I can to preserve our history, but it has to be a community effort together. Heck, we don't do enough of the proprietary house, I wish it was open every day. But the reality is, we're doing our job to look at this developer just like we would at any other developer, because legally, that's what we're called to do. Number two, when Northwest Financial presented to you, which is a financial advisor who oversee, who, who reviewed the financial feasibility study presented, they said that this project cannot move forward unless we, 35-year pilot is provided. It's, I mean, I am not, I am not an accountant, I'm not sure if any of you council folks are financial advisors yourself to know, but we are hearing from professionals, they're not, whether you choose to say they're lying or not, that they might be of an opinion. But I, I'm telling you, this is what has been presented to us as an agency, and at the same time, I wanna remind you all that, right now, what we're getting on, on that blighted property from taxes is, will be, is, is nothing compared to what we will get with a pilot, year one. Year one, we're gonna get more money coming into the city with a pilot, 35-year pilot, whatever you wanna call it. That is a fact, okay? And when I look at the needs of this community, we will not be able to continue to provide the service that is necessary to take care of our community if we don't continue to develop. Now, I, I ask, I'm sorry if I need to apologize again, I, I'm sorry that our community perhaps were misinformed by various political parties. A lot of these folks were not present at our meetings.
Yes.
No one pays me.
You had your... Okay, Mr. Rosa.
If you need to speak, I need somebody to go on the line and get on the...
Mr. Rosa.
When everybody, when someone is at the mic, I need respect. I need respect for whoever is there, okay? Thanks.
Mr. Rosa, thank you so much for your comments. I had asked a couple of questions before, but before I get to that, you are the Chair of PARA. How long have you been a member of Perth Amboy Redevelopment Agency?
Since 2015.
Since 2015, you've been on it so almost 10 years, nine years. And since then, you've become a Director of the Library, okay? So now, you're vested into this city of Perth Amboy. I had asked over a year for a presentation from PARA for the council, for the residents on the projects PARA was working on that you're the Chair of. PARA refused to give the presentation to the City Council and to the residents of Perth Amboy on any project they were working on. No, this was done in a vacuum. The, we were gonna bring up Vaz's project, everybody knew about Vaz's project, they were out there marketing the project to other communities, and everyone knew every detail about that project, that never came to fruition. So let's talk about that, the original project and all the amenities that Perth Amboy was supposed to receive that never came to fruition. What about the value of that that we lost out on, and why aren't we receiving that? So let's go back to those questions that I asked before, since you're the Chair of PARA. Who is responsible for renting out the storefronts or the landings? And why are they, why had they been boarded up since I moved to this community over ten years ago?
Listen, that is way beyond my pay grade. I'm the Chairman of the Redevelopment Agency, I oversee developments...
So you refuse, you refuse to answer my question, there is nothing really, there's nothing for me to answer. Any other council person has answered a question. You refuse to answer my questions, this is...
I'm sorry, but he did answer your question.
Selling out of Perth Amboy.
Mr. Torres, he did answer your question.
He did not answer my question.
No, he doesn't have the answer.
I don't wanna give you a wrong answer.
He doesn't have...
Well, if you're the Chair of PARA, you should know that answer. You've been at PARA for nine years, you're the head of that redevelopment agency, you should know that answer, and the fact that you don't know that answer shows of what a sham this whole plan is, and how irresponsible and inexperienced this whole thing is.
And just for the record, I just wanna mention that, yes, Mr. Torres did ask for a presentation, and that presentation came to him, and he did not allow the people to present.
Let me clarify that, I did not want the attorney from the Redevelopment Agency giving a presentation while he's being paid to represent the City Council. While he's representing the City Council at a City Council meeting, he cannot perform the duties of the Redevelopment Agency. He could've had another attorney from his, from his, come and give that, but while he, while we're paying him to represent us, he cannot do the duty of a different board.
Good evening, everyone, how is everyone? So 129 High Street, my name is Daniel Gonzalez. So first and foremost, lots of negative things going back and forth between everybody. I like to highlight some positive things that have been happening in Perth Amboy. Number one, on the waterfront, there's been tons of things that have been happening with the Perth Amboy artworks, things at the, the Old Ferry Slip, the music that's been there up in Bayview Park, there's been music there. My children participate at the tennis courts and they take tennis lessons all summer that are free. There's art programs during the summer throughout Perth Amboy, we have a beautiful art exhibits that happen all the time over up at the end of Fayette Street. So additionally, you know, we have the Dominican Festival coming soon, which is a beautiful thing that happens in the city of Perth Amboy. I think last night, they had the night out, the police night out, I forget the exact, National Night Out, I apologize. But there's a variety of amazing things happening in Perth Amboy consistently that we all must congratulate this administration, our City Council people, our police officers, our firefighters, our beautiful cultures and communities for attending those events, for making those events. Perth Amboy is a vibrant, amazing place with an amazing history, and I'm not sure what is happening here. The other thing that I like to comment, because we're in the United States of America, isn't it amazing that we get to come up here and talk and voice our opinions and contribute to our history and guidance and give our input about things having to do with our beautiful city? What I saw from Metaparl today, and all of the members of, of the people that work at Metaparl, I saw an amazing employer and amazing employees in the city of Perth Amboy. That's a beautiful thing, and they should give themselves a hand. Again, lots of beautiful things happening in Perth Amboy. I am part of the Redevelopment Agency. I was born and raised here on the waterfront, graduated from Perth Amboy High School in 1995, I'm a lawyer in town, and I've had a law office in Perth Amboy for 20 years, my heart is here. I actually tried cases in that old building that we're talking about until 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night with the old judges, back in that police station building. It's an ugly building. It was falling apart back then, I can't imagine what's happening to it now. Point of this all is that the fourth Tuesday of every month is a meeting for the Perth Amboy Redevelopment Agency. I sit there as a co-chair of the Perth Amboy Redevelopment Agency, and every time we ask for public comment, there's nobody there, right? Mr. Torres, please come to the Redevelopment Agency meetings, learn more about what happens at the Redevelopment Agency, so that you don't come up there and act confused and ask questions that you should know the answer to as a City Council person in the city of Perth Amboy. I'm not asking you to respond.
Wait, wait, I am gonna respond, because you're, no, no.
No, 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 wait for his, wait for his...
He called me out personally, and I'm a council person, he's supposed to address the Council President and not council members, but continue.
Well, I, I apologize, because I think the Redevelopment Agency Chairperson was called out a minute ago, and what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and I apologize. Nevertheless, what's happening, what's happening here in Perth Amboy, the Kushners own that property, guys, they own it. They own, they own, that last Ms. Wickin, for sure, they do not own that portion, you're absolutely right, the portion with the police station, but the rest of it, they own it. When I drive to work every day, I, I live on High Street, I drive past that empty lot, and I'm disgusted, and I think to myself, whoa, when is it ever gonna be redeveloped? It needs redevelopment, there's no question about that. We pared it down on the Redevelopment Agency down to 600 units from the proposed 200. We're getting a restaurant...
Okay, don't get some, I, I wanna address something.
Can I ask one more time?
I, I, I'm the, I wanna address something, because you said that I should attend the meetings. We are, we are the City Council, we have a liaison on the City Council that is a member of that who's supposed to inform the council. Plus, now, going forward, whenever there's an item on the agenda that's asking for any lots or any properties that you're asking the City Council to hand over for redevelopment, I want a presentation. The residents deserve a presentation on what you're asking for, not that we're asking for a lot 140 to be redeveloped, we would like, the residents and the council would like to know exactly what you are asking for, and it is not for us to attend your meeting to find out what is going on, it is for you to attend our meeting to inform the public.
May I respond? May, may I respond respectfully?
No, actually, his time is up, and we have another person behind him.
Your time is up.
Yeah.
Your time is up, Danny.
Shouldn't yell at people at the...
You're done, thank you.
I think she took some of my time, didn't she?
Go ahead.
Robert S. Goldsmith, also of Greenbaum, Rose Smith &amp; Davis, we represent Unitex Metaparl, and I think it's important for the council to understand that the 150 people that have been here tonight recognize that their jobs are absolutely in the crosshairs, that the action the council took in April of 2023, and you may not have known what project, property it was, specifically said, "Study that property to determine whether it meets the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment." That's the beginning of the process, and that process specifically says to include the power of eminent domain. So they are not just fearful, they have a reason to be fearful. The fact is that that is the first step that this council took to proceed with the taking of that property and the elimination of 150 union jobs in turn for 200, for two probably maintenance positions. The fact is that this council could give these people peace of mind by introducing a resolution withdrawing that designation and putting that process to bed, because I think the likelihood of that process will be that the area will be declared in need of redevelopment. With the power of eminent domain, you will be asked to implement that, and I think the ultimate result will be that their jobs will be put at risk. So I think it's important to know that. Now, the prior spoken mentioned about Long Branch, my firm was redevelopment council in Long Branch for 25 years, I was there for 15 years as part of that. Kushner only did some recent redevelopment, so the suggestion that he's been a redeveloper there for any period of time is baseless. The applied companies, Matzil and Mumford, Khabnanian, did the vast majority of the development that took place there. He's only done a piece in the last few years. I've been doing, I went to Perth Amboy High School, I grew up across the street from City Hall at 259 High Street, I followed the city all my life. The fact is that, one thing to consider, I learned, I only do redevelopment work, either for the public sector side or the private sector side, and one thing I learned in the last 10 years is you wanna have something called schmuck insurance. You wanna be sure that if Kushner has an amazingly successful project, you also benefit from that. The pilot offer here is 10%, we don't do 10% pilots for 30 years, you can increase it, 11, 12, 13, 14, 10% is only the minimum, so he's getting 10% for 30 years, it's the minimum permitted. Look, could a building be built without a pilot? Probably not. But you're not getting the rights that you should get under the agreement, 10% is bupkis. It's a ridiculous number, you're not protected. If he has a grand slam home run, you get 10% of his grand slam. There should be a mechanism where if he gets a grand slam, you get a grand slam as well. And the idea that he's been the redeveloper for a quarter-century, that's staggering. He has produced so little in that quarter-century, other than litigation with the city and litigation with the poor people who bought units in his building. That's absurd, it is an absurd proposition. And you've heard, you've heard from scores of people, I would urge you to entertain a resolution withdrawing the designation, give these people peace of mind for the next generation that will work at Unitex Metaparl. Thank you.
Thank you.
You could, you could introduce that to us.
Next person.
Monique Marsh Olenick, 368 Rector Street. I am one of those poor people who owns a unit at the landings, I think I'm the only person or one of the only people to actually speak today on behalf of the landings. I'm also the Secretary of the Bayview Board. So I appreciate listening to everyone's viewpoints tonight, so I wanna offer the viewpoint of, I cannot speak for everyone in my buildings, but I can tell you that the vast majority of the people who rent and own at the Bayview have a vested interest in seeing redevelopment happen here. The people at the landings definitely deserve to see their property values go back up. A lot of people who invested back in 2006 and 2007 have property values that are still below what they paid back then, which is really unfortunate. So every year, or twice a year when we have our open public meetings, I have to face the owners of the building and explain to them why nothing has been done. That is the most common question that we get, and I don't have an answer. All we can tell them is that it's in the hands of the council or it's in the hands of PARA. I can tell you that the people want to see something done. I wanna be clear also that I am very aware of who Kushner is, as one who has had personal negotiations with him on behalf of the buildings. I don't appreciate who he and his team are as people, I will tell you that, as I have told them that directly. But he is, in fact, the owner of the land, so while I appreciate everyone's input as to, you know, what they would like to see done, I think there are a lot of great ideas, I think the reality is, 20 years ago, plus years ago now, we lied in bed with the devil, and now we're kind of stuck with it. I don't think that this city has the financial capacity or means to fight a Kushner in court that will drag it out another 10 years, and we will potentially lose, and we will still see nothing there. I mean, I wish they weren't the developer, don't get me wrong, but the reality is, me being a businessperson and understanding how this works, we can't just take the land back from them. They will fight us, and they have made it very clear to our boards that they have no problem sitting on it if this council doesn't move anything forward. And we will continue to have to sit and look at brownfields every day, which actually has more negative impacts because of the wind on our building itself, so, you know, if something were to be there, that would actually help. And I will also say that I've heard this, I've been here, what, seven, almost eight years now, a lot of people talking about a different plan, a different plan, but I've actually not seen any other plan, because I think most folks in this room who are involved in city government recognize that it will not be easy to just take this away from them and go with another developer. I do get that people have concerns, I have concerns myself, I do recognize the schools are overcrowded, I know there's some question of, well, how did you get only 18? I will tell you this, if these are luxury rentals, and this is no shade to anyone, that those kids will not be going to Perth Amboy City Schools, as anyone in my building who owns sends their kid to Wordlaw or some kind of Catholic school. So that is probably why they are not concerned, because if they're charging $3,500-ish dollars in rent, none of those folks are sending their kids to Perth Amboy City Schools. It's unfortunate, but I will tell you, that is the reality. And I don't wanna see the traffic, it will suck, but I would actually rather have Hoboken property values and suck up the traffic, to be honest. And then last, I think I can actually answer BJ's question on who is responsible for renting those storefronts. The answer is Kushner. The answer is Kushner. So essentially, there's two storefronts there. There was a bank and then there was the builder's general. I think they've moved out now of, as of about a year or so now. The other space is very open and under, there's no poured floor. So, and I, from what I've heard, and again, this is pure hearsay, is that they don't want to subdivide it. So they are having challenges finding someone to rent the entire space. And I'm guessing they don't want to finish it either. So that person would have to finish it. I would say the one other thing, as you consider this and your negotiations with them on behalf of the board is we still need to get our master association cleaned up. Center Street is still not been dedicated to the city. So, you know, we have plowing issues and things like that. And we, in our master association is still created, you know, with all of the buildings that were supposed to be there. So we still want to put pressure on them to kind of help us dismantle that so we can kind of move forward and get our permanent CO and all of those other good things that other buildings have the luxury of having. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Wilma Mady and I live at 125 Water Street. I just want to let you know how much I despise this project. I live here, I have a business here, I invest here, and I spend my time here. And bringing another 602 apartments with 602 parking slots, it is not making any sense. All we're doing is bringing more children into our town that we can't afford to have. Our children recently were in trailers being taught. We don't have enough even parking for the schoolteachers. And I just can't believe that we are not even thinking on making a decision like that. It's nice to be rich. Come to Perth Amboy, fill it with whatever they want so they can make money on us, and then go home with their pockets full of money and just, ay, they're laughing. Oh, we, we built 602 apartments in our, in that town again. And because we allow it, that's the problem here. And I know what I'm talking about. And I know you guys do too. And you should really think about what the decision you're making because it does affect all of us, our children and our businesses. Do not, do not allow this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Kristen Culey. I also live at 368 Rector Street in the Bayview condos. I moved here last year. I own, I bought my condo. I love living here. I think we live in a beautiful town with history and the waterfront. It's just, I think the corporate greed is disgusting that is being agreed to. It's a beautiful spot on the water. It could be a park, it could be individual homes, ideally a park. But, you know, I just feel like versus these, I feel like all over New Jersey, an empty plot of land is now becoming these giant apartment buildings. Why can't we just have an empty plot of land become a beautiful open green space? Has the infrastructure been considered between traffic, between the water, sewer, schools? I know the schools keep being brought up. I just think there's so many things to consider that, as I, I wasn't going to come up, but there's been all these postings in my building trying to have a support the Kushner project. I guess they want us to be like, woo, we love Kushner. I mean, I don't think we do. I don't, I know I don't. But I just want you guys to please consider this project. Try to make it sustainable and as little impact as to the community as possible. I think we all love living here and we really care about Perth Amboy. And also, I'm glad there wasn't answer to those storefronts. Since I've moved here, I've been questioning, why are these empty storefronts? Right on the water, there's a parking lot. It could be beautiful. I picture myself going to a cafe on the water. It'd be, it'd be absolutely gorgeous. They're boarded up. It's absolutely ridiculous. Kushner should come and finish what he started. Actually give us the promises we've been, we've been given. Use the, these beautiful storefronts that could be used, right? That are already there. I hate when buildings are being, are built and they're not used, they're vacant. Let's use what we already, the infrastructure already have versus building new. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Council president, I would like to introduce a resolution rescinding the resolution that includes the Metaparrell property, the resolution that the council had approved in the past. I would like to introduce a resolution right now, as a late starter, rescinding that portion, that resolution that we had approved in the past, allowing that block, that portion of land where Metaparrell sits, to be given over to the planning board for possible development. I would like to introduce right now a resolution rescinding that one.
I would second that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening, Tashi Vasquez, Rector Street. I'm speaking as a resident, well, no, I'm speaking as the executive director of the redevelopment agency. Just want to answer or clear up a few things that I heard this evening regarding this project. Number one, in regards to the redevelopment, or redevelopment study, area in need of redevelopment study that's currently happening with the Metaparrell property in question. Again, to clarify, that area is already part of the, it's already designated an area in need of redevelopment. What is being studied, and only because of the timing of the old study, there's a law that requires the city to re-study an area if they want to include condemnation. So that is the property or the project that is currently being re-studied. I think it's important to note that the study and the designation does not mean that 150 people, que 150 personas van a perder su trabajo. It actually means that it allows the city to condemn the property if necessary for redevelopment. And in that condemnation, it requires relocation. So I think that it's important to note that, and I can't say that in Spanish and I wish I could. Oh, Lord, I wish I could say that in Spanish. Que si, si el, si el pueblo hace la des, how do you say designation? Si hacen el, el.
Designación?
La, eso mismo, que con, con dignidad, con condemnation, no quiere decir que unos 150 personas van a perder su trabajo. Si no es que le pone la responsabilidad a la ciudad para buscar un nuevo espacio para el, para la compañía. Y ese espacio puede estar aquí en Perth Amboy. So I think that it's very important to note that with condemnation comes relocation. And relocation within our city borders is possible. So to say that it's not is way off the cuff and it is misleading and probably misinformation, but misleading at best. To say that our schools are overcrowded, yes, we know that. We're on the list, the state has given us a new high school, where, you know, there's opportunity for new buildings and new schools in this city. And the demographic studies have been conducted to show that said X amount of students will be coming into this city with a development of this size. We are not experts. No one on the city council is an expert. I don't pretend to be an expert, but there are experts who are trained. There's research behind where they come up with the formula to say how many students are coming into the building. They're not just saying that 18 new students are coming. When 700 students graduate, 700 new students come into a building. So, you know, it continues to add. So let's not get caught up on misinformation. I think we have to really do our due diligence and our homework on what this means. Again, on tonight's agenda, and the council president said it multiple times, the conversation is being tabled for additional negotiations. This council, this administration are doing their due diligence to ensure that all parties involved in this negotiation are considered and that Perth Amboy gets the best possible option, the best one that's at hand. It's not, let's build single-family homes because what developer is going to do that? It's not, let's open, let's create a park because who's going to pay for a park? It's what could we get and how can we get there together? I think that it's important to note that. And in any, and we have to also understand the redevelopment process. There are steps to it, there's litigation. And number one, we encourage developers to build here. That is what we want to see Perth Amboy move forward. And in order to encourage development, there has to be incentives. And the state statute spells those out for us. We have to work together to negotiate the best possible outcome for this project. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say one thing about misinformation. We heard from the owner of a company and his legal representation stating that if his property is taken over by eminent domain, that most likely they will move. Not saying that the city is going to relocate them and everyone's going to keep their job. We heard from the mouth of the owner of the company stated that, stated that this is most likely going to happen. And like I said, I visit the shot factory once a year. We're sitting in a property where they had their factory and hired over 100 union members. They were not relocated in Perth Amboy. They're, right now, their factory is in Union, New Jersey. And now some of our residents have to commute to go to work over there. So that is not misinformation. But we hear from the mouth of the owner of a company that if this company closes down, that he is moving out of, that most likely not be in Perth Amboy. So that is not misinformation from the owner of the company.
Hi, Willie, 176 Sherman Street. I was here at the, hi, everybody. I was here at the last meeting when the whole thing was tabled, was put away for a little while. Great job, by the way, because that gave us all the opportunity to be here today and express that the amount of people here that have been coming in and out is amazing. This is nothing. The next meeting should be in, in the five corners so you can give the town a chance to really come in and do this and get it out of the way. But there are so many things that are concerning here. For example, Mr. VJ Torres seems to be the only one that's speaking in behalf of anything in here. What's going on with all four people that are quietly sitting? I get it, you're listening and getting all the information. But it's scary that you don't even ask any questions. You didn't even push back. And now somebody here said that our kids are not going to go to Perth Amboy schools because, what, it's a ghetto? Well, that is my ghetto. And that's where I live. And my kids will go to Perth Amboy schools. And I'm concerned that the schools that are not being funded by people like that are the schools that are being left for my kids to attend because your kids that live in those fancy apartments that are falling apart are not going to go to Perth Amboy schools. So who cares in first place? Now, listen, let me tell you this, and, and I got to go pick up a pizza because I got two kids. There is a CEO and a battery of lawyers that spoke greatly of their employees and their situation. When you have the CEO of a company that's multimillion, millions of dollars, sitting in a council meeting is because he's concerned for the job, concerned for his people, and concerned for the town. These are the people that you have to uplift. These are the people that bring jobs, union jobs to our town. This isn't a matter, listen, if, if Mr. Kushner owns their property, that's great. I own a property in 176. I give you my, the backyard, you can do something in there too. No, but that's not how it works. You're saying to me today, oh, Kushner owns it? Of course he does. He can do anything he wants with it. But does it have to be 600 apartments? And 600 families whose kids are going to attend Catholic schools somewhere else in Hoboken? You know why Hoboken is expensive? You're mistaken. Hoboken is expensive because it's a step away from New York City. That's why it's expensive. And it's a horrible city to drive around. Very expensive for all the wrong reasons. Folks, we will be back again. We'll be back if we have to. Just do the right thing. Let's, let's, you know, let's build something else. Let's, let's, let's make, listen, I want to come to Perth Amboy for more. I work in Cranford. And I wish I could say to my wife, let's go walk down the street to downtown Perth Amboy to have dinner and bring the kids. These beautiful summer nights have been wasted in our yard because we don't have anything to do in town. And more buildings, listen, they'd be pretty. Of course, they better be pretty, right? Because, I mean, they're pretty to look at. But that's, is that what we need? I mean, so many spaces, empty space, so much to do in this town. Our schools, oh my God, last time somebody decreed, decreed the, the schools that, that my, my nephews, my nieces attended and some of the lawyers and people that are here attended? Somebody just said that then. My kids are not going to attend those schools because we pay $3,500 in rent. Guess what? I pay mortgage. I pay mortgage. And I, my kids will have to attend because that mortgage pays for these schools. Have a great day.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, William Patrick, 790 Hornet Street. I've heard a lot of misinformation tonight, but most of it has been coming from employees of the city of Perth Amboy. Okay, Long Branch, and they pointed to Charlie Kushner's project there. He didn't build that, he bought that. Somebody else built that. Someone else from the, from the redevelopment agency said that nobody wants to buy single-family homes. Well, when I was sitting up there as the council president and I was on the planning board, we agreed to build Gerald Court, which is right off of Chamberlain Avenue. 16 brand-new homes sold before they were completed. Charlie Kushner is a felon. He's a crook. I've sat with him, I've talked with him about his projects. I know that the plan originally was to take over from Washington Street to High Street to Fayette Street. It was all going to be condemned, it was all going to be Charlie's project. Okay, let's stop deluding ourselves that that's not really the case. And, oh, well, we had to send it to the planning board. Yes, I know how that, how the function works. But who's the engineer for the city? CME, I believe. Who's the engineer for the planning board? CME, I believe. No, they got rid of CME on the planning board? I think they still, I think he's still there. And, and who are the lawyers involved, right? Bill Northgrave is making a lot of money on pilots. A lot of money. And this pilot is horrendous. I would never have agreed to a pilot anywhere near this when I was sitting up there on the council. I'd never agree to that. The most I agreed to was a 20-year pilot with steps built in so that by the end of the pilot, they were paying their fair share of taxes like every other homeowner in this community. And the reason for pilots to begin with was in order to encourage developers to come in to Rust Belt communities to build on contaminated land. This isn't contaminated land. This is pretty clean land. We're talking about the Chevron properties or the Copperworks properties. Those were contaminated lands that needed a pilot to encourage development, possibly. But as another developer had said when they came before us, that Perth Amboy sits in a sweet spot right outside of, right outside of New York City. And logistics is all about miles. And so we really didn't have to offer pilots to encourage these people to come in because we had the logistic heart right outside of New York. And I've heard this from multiple developers, that they were begging to get in here. They, sure, if you're going to give them money back, why wouldn't they take it? I'll take it if you're going to give me money back. But you don't have to. You need to be informed. And this is horrendous. 35 years? Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a gift not only to a crook, a convicted felon like Charlie Kushner. And you gotta, you gotta, you know, anybody in here who's a Christian knows 666. That's his address in New York City. They ought to tell you something, right? I don't know, I don't know why any of you would agree to anything that Kushner wants because I never did. The best deal that Perth Amboy got was under Joe Voss for that project. But that's long gone. And he hasn't done crap in this city since, you know, since Joe went up, up the river. And so we can't take the property? They, you know, the city, the people that work for the city are talking out of both sides of their mouth. They're talking about putting metaparrel in, in an area in need of redevelopment and taking their property, but you can't take Kushner's property? Oh, no. You could take anybody's property. You could take Kushner's property back because he's done nothing with it. When you look across the river to Staten Island, you see multi-million-dollar single-family homes. When you look across the river to South Amboy, you see million-dollar homes. But here, we can only build rental property. That's all we can think about is, oh, we have to build, we have to get a big developer in here to build rental property. No, we don't. Because the guys that built Gerald Court, I talked to them, and they'd be more than happy to take on building single-family homes on that property if the city wanted to take it back from Charlie Kushner, and he could fight you all, all he wants. And you could take that property back and give it to smaller developers willing to build single-family homes. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Alan Silver, 244 Rector Street. I'm going to keep it real short. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I haven't seen this many people come to meetings. I haven't come myself in a long time, but the only other time I remember was King Plaza. That was, they were doing both projects kind of at the same time. King Plaza has been finished for over a decade or whatever. Well, this, which, we had the person from the redevelopment come up here and say, now we're going to phase two. That was phase one. Yep, that's already been approved, phase one. Now we're going to phase, no, phase one was never finished. It wasn't even up close to being finished, and now you're saying, but now we're moving on to phase two? That's ridiculous. But, um, now, thank you, everybody, for coming. I think that a lot of people, if this amount of people were to come to meetings, you would be surprised how different votes would go up here. I always said, if you bring up 10 people to a meeting, to the city council, 10 people, everybody's going to be looking from, sitting out there saying, oh, my God, look at 10 people are here, we better do what they want to do, you know? When you come out like this, nobody was talking here, but I did see people paying attention. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Torres. You'll be sorely missed. I hope somebody picks up that ball.
Thank you.
Fernando Gonzalez, 128 High Street, Perth Amboy. You think I live in Puerto Rico? You should come and visit me. Guys, I've been in your seat, as you well know. And your only job here is to do what's best for the citizens of Perth Amboy. As you know, I, one of those people who are against a pilot, always been. Yet, while I sat there, I gave a pilot, alone with every member that was with me, including Mr. Petrick. Okay? Not 20 years, 20 years with steps, whatever you want to call it. Your job is to make sure the citizens of Perth Amboy are not taken advantage of. That's what you're there for. Your only decision is based on making a decision about a pilot. That's your decision. The reality is that we created a redevelopment authority to make sure that every i is dotted and every t is crossed. That's their job. And then you have a redevelopment, a planning board that makes other decisions, like it was mentioned, that an investigation is going on where a particular property should be included. That's not your job. Your job is to sit there and make a decision of what's best for the city of Perth Amboy. You know? I sat in that council and I watched that property, okay? For the last 20 years, sit there without giving us one cent. We closed it up hoping that something was going to happen, and it didn't happen, sadly enough. But now, something is going to happen. You just got to make it the best thing possible, but you can't. You cannot let it sit there for another 20 years. Because you know how much it costs the citizens of Perth Amboy to be sitting in that, not collecting any taxes on the property? Okay? People have these visions of grand doors, of what they can do. The law is the law. And you know what? Money talks. Any of you have a, a few million dollars, maybe $150 million, to go do that project? You're welcome to come in and do something better. But the reality is, I don't see people breaking the doors down. And yet, we sit here, we wonder, we got to stop fighting progress. We need to move forward. I am tired driving on High Street, I live on High Street, every damn day and seeing that property close out and not producing anything. Guys, make the right decision. The citizens of Perth Amboy need you to, whatever that pilot is, with 15 years, 20 years, whatever it is, work something out so we move forward and we don't keep sitting where we're at, at this moment. Losing money in that property, and you know, it looks pretty shitty right now. So we need to make it look better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, I'd like to say something about the redevelopment. The past council, myself, council president Petrick, and councilman Joe Pomona, who's sitting in the back, we three voted to dissolve Para. We had the majority of the council vote to dissolve Para and to take on the responsibility of Para. But our attorney at the time, who's also sits for the attorney for Para, did not move on it, and instead, they replaced certain council members and just never went through what the council voted on, the desolment of Para. We've heard that the Kushners are in control of their own properties, but yet refuse to move and do any development on it for over 20 years. And I would say that it's blighted. Who blighted that property? And now, I'm sorry, I'm from Jersey City, I don't like being taken advantage, and I know when someone's trying to take advantage of me. I don't like that. Yeah, I'll go back, right? Yeah, I know, right? I know, right? You can go just with the other one, you can go just with the other person and tell me to go back where I come from. I know that, right? I know. Right? But I have to go back here because, you know, we got some people from here who like to sell out Perth Amboy. We need to move in more people here who are going to defend the residents of Perth Amboy because there's a bunch of sellouts here that I see. So we need some real residents in here and some real people to get involved in politics to start changing things because all I see is a bunch of sellouts.
Okay, we need, we need to calm down. It's everyone, every single one who is here, and I just heard some people were replaced on the council. There's no replacement. People put each and every one of us here, and we repress, we represent, there's no putting somebody here. If you don't win, you're not here. If you want to make a difference, you run and you'll be part of this. And there were many years that this, that the council had been trying for this particular property to be taken care of, and every single group that had been here never did what they needed to do. Why it didn't work then? Now that it's time to take care of it? If there is something that is wrong, try to advise and make your vote valid, not sit over here and complain about what other people didn't do. Thank you.
Or what, or what council did not do, or what this council is not doing. There, there is a lot on board here with this development that we should have looked into. And no, it is not just the council's responsibility to vote yes or no on the pilot. We, we were elected by the residents of Perth Amboy, unlike Para, who's been appointed by the mayor, who's not even sitting here today, and I don't understand that. But Para was appointed by someone who is not even here, who is making the final decision. We're the representatives of the residents who voted us in. We're listening to the residents, and there has been, this is the first time, really, that residents get to address this matter, and that's a shame because it seems that this plan has been in development for at least almost four years now, but yet this is the first time that the residents are starting to hear a lot about this development. And yes, there is some misinformation going on, and that is the administration's fault because they did not give a proper presentation to the residents so that way there is no misinformation going around. You should have received a proper presentation so you knew exactly what was going on in this development, the way it was done with the original project. But yet, here we are looking over a project that seems that we're being bullied into approving. We're saying that some of the property belongs to Kushner. Yes, some of it does, not all of it. And yet, we're giving away additional property for a plan that we don't have a say in? This seems ridiculous. I don't, what, what authority does the council have? Are we going to usurp all of our authority? Or are we going to try to do the right thing by the, the people who elected us, and not just the administration, do right by the people and hear their concerns and go forward with a plan or no plan, whatever is better for the city?
But I, I do not understand your comment because I'm not sure, but I haven't been bullied. I would like to know who's been bullying you to do, to approve that project.
No one is bullying me, but I'm hearing people, there's employees here from the administration coming saying that without this, we're not going to get anything, that we're not receiving any money, that this is blighted.
But it still, still is your vote. If you do not like the project, you vote no. That is as simple as that. If you go with the project, you vote yes. That is it.
I would like to have seen.
And I'm not going to question your vote, and you shouldn't question my vote or anybody else.
Anybody could question anybody's vote. This is the United States, we have that right to question anything. And at the same time, and at the same time, the person who has final approval of this plan is Mayor Helman Kaba. Helman Kaba should be here at this meeting to hear the concerns of the residents. We had a room full of residents here today, and the head, the head person who is going to approve this should be here to hear the concerns of the residents. This is a shame.
We are supposed to be the one making the decision. We heard the citizens, and you say that we shouldn't question, that, that you can question my vote. I think we were elected to make the decision. If you make the decision of yes or no, I will never question why you did it.
I'm not questioning your vote. I didn't question your vote, but I'm just saying if I want to, I could.
No, 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 you said that you are allowed to question my vote. I think you need to understand our position.
There's a difference between questioning and respecting your vote. There's a difference.
This is tabled.
There's no vote tonight for that. All right, if there's no more, uh, someone, I need to go.
Yes, yes, I.
I need a motion to close public.
Move.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we, now I need a motion to go in closed session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. After the closed session, we will be coming back to start our meeting. Thank you. We're back from, I need a motion to come back from closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any name? I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.